Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. I would like to advise all those present that notice of this regular meeting has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey. Notice of time and place of this meeting has been included in the annual notice of meetings, which is posted on file with the City Clerk in the Jersey Journal and the Star Ledger. An additional notice of time and place was posted on file with the City Clerk and forwarded to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger on December 10th, 2021. The regular meeting of municipal council of the city of Bayonne is now in session. Roll call, please, Mr. Medina.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. La Palooza?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Here. Please rise for the page.
(inaudible)
Like always, I just want to make a few quick announcements, because I know not everyone stays to the end. I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday season, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year, and I wish you all health and happiness in the upcoming year. I think that's all. Madeline.
O one. Madeline?
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Before we start everything, I just want to read a proclamation into the record, and I know that this person is, I think, watching at home on a computer, hopefully. Whereas on Wednesday, December 15th, 2021, the city of Bayonne is honoring Genevieve Jenny Machain, a highly esteemed retiree of the city of Bayonne. She gave an unprecedented 46 years of service and dedication to the city's residents in the municipal court. She had one of the longest careers in municipal government in Bayonne's history. And whereas for Jenny Machain, her work in municipal court was not merely providing administrative support to judges or overseeing staff, her commitment was to the public and to treating them with the utmost dignity and respect. Whether someone was in court due to a parking ticket or a criminal offense, Jenny's unwavering compassion for people was the driving force behind her work performance. Whereas Jenny Machain began her employment with the city of Bayonne on February 1st, 1975, under the Comprehensive Employment and Training Act. That's the CETA program. In 1987, she was promoted from the position of Senior Accounting Clerk Typing to Deputy Municipal Court Clerk. In 1990, Jenny rose to the rank of Municipal Court Clerk. In 1992, Jenny became Municipal Court Administrator and remained in that position until her retirement in 2021. And whereas Jenny Machain was and always will be considered the truest of assets to the city of Bayonne, we thank and salute her for 46 years of outstanding service. Now, therefore, I, James M. Davis, Mayor of the city of Bayonne, do hereby proclaim that Wednesday, December 15th, 2021, is to be observed as Jenny Machain Day in the city of Bayonne, and I respectfully call upon all residents to thank her for her 46 years of extraordinary service to the people of Bayonne. We wish her many happy years of retirement. In witness whereof, I have set here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Bayonne to be affixed this 15th day of December 2021, James M. Davis, Mayor. And I worked with Jenny for many years prosecuting, and she was, that was her court. She was an absolutely fantastic woman and an absolutely fantastic employee.
Thank you, Jenny.
And then we've got a resolution that went to a closed session for a short amount of time to discuss pilots, and because it was on the agenda, I've got to read it into the record. Whereas pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12A, the city of Bayonne's municipal council must conduct its meetings in open view of the public at all times, subject to the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B. And whereas pursuant to NJSA 10:412B7, the city of Bayonne's municipal council may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting wherein the city of Bayonne's municipal council discusses any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiation. And whereas pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B5, the city of Bayonne's municipal council may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting wherein the city of Bayonne's municipal council discusses any matter that could adversely affect the public interest if discussion of such matters was disclosed. And whereas it is now necessary to review certain options and the legal implications and ramifications thereof for the purpose of discussing pending and/or anticipated negotiations between the city of Bayonne and certain developers regarding financial agreements, in particular for the following sites: 218-220 Broadway, 132 and 140 Avenue E, 157-163 Avenue E, and 25 East 22nd Street. And whereas the city of Bayonne's legal and negotiating positions might be compromised by a public discussion of same at the current time, and whereas the city of Bayonne's municipal council now deems it necessary to convene in a closed session in order to discuss the aforementioned matters and the legal and financial ramifications of same. And whereas it is the intention of the city of Bayonne's municipal council to keep reasonably comprehensive minutes of this closed session meeting pursuant to NJSA 10:4-14, and to make said minutes available to the general public after the finalization of the issues involved, now therefore be it resolved that the city of Bayonne's municipal council should now recess to a private session in order to discuss the matters set forth above, and be it further resolved that the city of Bayonne's municipal council shall reconvene at the public session at the conclusion of this private session, and action might be taken on the matters discussed during the private session.
Move it.
Second. And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. La Palooza?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. Nadrowski? Aye. Motion?
Motion to convene. Second.
Second.
On the motion to convene, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. La Palooza?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. Nadrowski?
Aye.
(inaudible) O one, a resolution postponing the final passage of an ordinance entitled of the city of Bayonne in the county of Hudson, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement with Hudson County Improvement Authority, delaying to the issuance of up to $95 million aggregate principal amount of the authority's city guaranteed lease revenue bond. And we will issue a notification there about body of Hudson County Improvement Authority to the meeting of January 19, 2022. Mr. Carroll, Mr. Perez, second. And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. La Palooza?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. Nadrowski?
Aye. They can't hear me.
Can I have a hand raise in the audience?
You can unmute them.
Stephanie Wilson, I'm going to unmute.
Ms. Wilson, is this?
(inaudible).
Is this on O one?
Still has a hand raised. Stephanie, you're going to have to unmute yourself. And then be.
Okay. I want to talk in an open forum, not on any particular thing that we got to talk about now.
Okay.
So do I talk now or later?
No. We're just on O two now.
No, no, I just want to talk in open forum.
Okay. We're not up to that section yet.
Thank you.
You're welcome. O two is a resolution postponing the final passage of an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Bayonne, State of New Jersey, Authorizing the Guarantee of the Payment of the Principal of an Interest on Not Exceeding $95 Million Aggregate Principal Amount of the City's Guaranteed Lease Revenue Bond to be Issued by the Hudson County Improvement Authority for the Purpose of Providing Additional Security Therefore and Determining Certain Other Matters in Connection Therewith to the Meeting of January 19th." And who would like to move it? Move it. And on that one, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. La Palooza?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
No.
O three is an ordinance for a hearing. It is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, approving the financial agreement buying between the city of Bayonne and Woodmount Bayonne Phase Two Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 52nd Street, which is identified as Block 37, Lot 1, as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne, which was introduced at the first meeting November 10th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board, which is required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at the meeting of December 15th, 2021, and is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution giving the ordinance second reading. Who'd like to move it? Or? Is this the one where we're going to reintroduce? What is this? Is this O two?
What is the board now?
No, we have to take action on it. We introduced it. There's a public hearing. We advertised the public hearing. We need to, we need to allow public hearing, and we need to take action. I mean, we advertised it. We took action. We moved it. Process says we need to take an action on it. You moving the ordinance for second reading? Yes. And who would like the second? Mr. Perez is not here. We're going to let the public have a say if they have a say on it. We advertise it. Okay. So much for good government.
Well, there's a public speaking portion as well.
Okay. O four is an ordinance amending the ordinance number O-21-32, entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, to Adopt the Official Street Name of a New Roadway Located in the Bayonne Maritime District of the Peninsula at Bayonne Harbor," which was introduced and passed first reading at the meeting held November 10th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of December 15th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution giving the ordinance second reading is moved by Councilman La Palooza. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
Second reading is by title, "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number O-21-32, Entitled 'An Ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, to Adopt the Official Street Name of a New Roadway Located in the Bayonne Maritime District of the Peninsula at Bayonne Harbor.'" And on the resolution for second reading, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. La Palooza?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And the council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance opportunity to be heard. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Go move.
And a second?
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais? No, Mr. Galais is not here. I knew I was going to do that. Mr. La Palooza?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage?
Move.
And a second?
Second.
And on the resolution for final passage, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. La Palooza?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
O five is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, New Jersey, adopting the redevelopment plan titled "The Former Cash Cam Redevelopment Plan for the Properties Identified as Block 360, Lot 1, Block 332, Lots 2, 2.01, 4, and 5, Blocks 361, Lot 12, and Block 352, Lot 3, as shown on the official tax map of the city pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law," which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held November 10th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that a further consideration for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of December 15th is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution giving the ordinance second reading is moved by the council president. Mr. La Palooza, will you second?
No.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Not second again?
No. He said no to the second. He said no to the second, but you have to vote on. There's no second. There's no second, okay. So it fails. Okay. Don't mind me. He seconded. No. He didn't second. Wow, you said aye.
Right, he said no.
He said no. He said no. So no public hearing on that? No. Did anyone come for that? Someone came for that in the audience, but I guess you can be heard. You could speak, no, at public time, please come up and have your say. I know we advertised it, but we're not allowing for the public. So speak at the, are you signed up for speaking at the public comment?
Yes.
You can address it then, okay? Thank you. Couple more ahead. O six is an ordinance entitled "A Capital Ordinance Providing for the Various Citywide Utility Meter Systems Improvements Buying in the City of Bayonne in the County of Hudson, State of New Jersey, Appropriating $515,000 Therefore to Pay for the Costs Thereof," which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held November 10th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of December 15th, 2021, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution giving the ordinance second reading. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
And a second? And on the resolution for second reading, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais? By the end of the meeting, I'll realize he's not here. Mr. La Palooza?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, "A Capital Ordinance Providing for Various Citywide Utility Meter System Improvements Buying in the City of Bayonne in the County of Hudson, State of New Jersey, Appropriating $515,000 Therefore." The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
We have pre-hand raised online.
Okay.
Robert C. Dalton, I'm going to unmute you. You are now unmuted. Unmute yourself, and you should be able to speak. Mr. Dalton, are you there? Can you unmute yourself? Okay, I'm going to mute Robert again. Time in a minute. Let's move to Peter Franco. Peter Franco, if you can unmute himself. Peter Franco, you are muted. There you go.
All right, good evening, everybody, council. I just had, I had a question actually on O one and O two, but then I was on a train and it was impossible to, you know, be able to speak, and I wasn't sure if I actually just missed the public portion.
No, you did not. We're not there yet. We went into a closed session when we started.
Oh, okay, great. All right, thank you so much.
Next in.
All right, the next man is Gail Godsky.
Gudowski.
On page two. Gudowski, thank you. You are unmuted. If you'll have him unmute himself and speak. And I'm muting here very much.
Good evening, everyone. I just would like clarification on this. What kind of upgrades in meters are we going to have here?
These are parking meters. This is for the parking utility.
Oh, it's for parking meters. Okay. All right, thank you. It was a little unclear. Thank you very much.
Welcome. Anyone else?
I'm going to mute Gail again. And I'm going to unmute. We actually have another scan right, one second. Gail is muted. I'm going to try and unmute Stephanie Wilson.
She wants the public speaking portion. She already said that.
Okay, well, she had, she had re-raised her hand, but she put it back down again. So we're going to try and Robert C. Dalton again. Unmuted Robert C. Dalton. Are you able to unmute yourself and speak? Mr. Dalton, are you there? I love Robert Dalton hanging in for the time. Move on, or give him a couple minutes.
Can move on, Madeline. You want to move on? You want to close the hearing? Motion to close. And a second?
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. La Palooza?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage?
Move.
Second. And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. La Palooza?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
O seven is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne by adding Chapter 18, entitled Crane Regulations, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held November 10th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of December 15th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution giving the ordinance second reading is moved by council member.
I just wanted to know if we could table this for at least till next month. I spoke to Councilman Galais, who couldn't be here. He had some questions as well as I do. I spoke to a couple developers that, when they heard about this, they wanted to ask a few questions also. So I was wondering if we could table this until next month.
I know we have people in the audience here to speak on it also, who travel to speak on it, so.
I mean, I would be fine with speaking on it.
So we can open the public hearing and postpone it. We'll have the public hearing on it, okay?
Okay.
So. So who'd like to second the second reading?
Second.
And on the motion for second reading, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. La Palooza?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And second reading is by title, "An Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Bayonne by Adding Chapter 18, Entitled Crane Regulations." The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Chris Lollevy. For the record, it's L.A.L.E.V. as in Victor, E.E. I represent the operating engineers locally 25 for the heavy equipment operators of the state of New Jersey, from Cape May, and we also cover the five counties of New York. The crane language is simply a safety thing that we are pushing and we are for. As well as a representative, I am also a crane instructor. I've been on cranes pretty much my whole life, worked throughout Hudson County my whole life until I became a business representative presently. What this ordinance allows is cities and towns throughout the state of New Jersey to know that what they're getting in their city is a crane that is inspected correctly as per state regulations and an operator that is certified as per state regulations with the proper credentials. That's what this is. Any questions? I'm more than happy that you table it till next month or a month after. I'm more than happy to come and explain to anybody. I can have that conversation. I just appreciate you considering it. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I do have a question.
Sure.
These guidelines that are in this crane ordinance are already all a state law that we are required by law, to, by law, in the state of New Jersey, the cranes have to be certified, and the operators have to be licensed.
By law, in the state of New Jersey, yes, that's how it is.
That's what it is. So Bayonne needs to be following this already.
Right. Right now, any project for the county of Hudson, this safe crane language goes into effect. West New York has adopted it, Hoboken, Gutenberg, Carney Union City in North Bergen, as far as Hudson County goes, as well as many towns and cities throughout New Jersey. So to answer your question, in the state of New Jersey, a crane needs a yearly inspection. That's to be sure that everything is okay on it and safe. As far as the operator, that operator needs to have a CCO, which is the federal license, also a New Jersey state crane license, which is issued through the state of New Jersey, and a medical card, which is the same as, if anybody's familiar with the DOT medical card, like a truck driver would have, gives you a physical and ensure that you're in good health. So that's exactly what that is. So yes, to answer your question, and I'm sorry I went long-winded about it, to answer your question, yes, in the state of New Jersey, that's what you need. So we're just pushing for safety of residents, projects, workers, business owners, et cetera. Yeah, and this is throughout the state. This isn't.
So you would say this is more about enforcement of what's already law?
Well, to be quite honest, as a crane operator, it kind of baffles me that towns and cities throughout the state, to replace a hot water heater in your house, you have to pull a permit. To erect a crane or put a crane up that could potentially kill somebody in less than a second, you don't need anything. That doesn't make sense to me. So if it makes sense to you, that's fine, but that's where this ordinance comes from. I come from a safety standpoint of this. I don't come from, I don't come from a union face, although I am a union delegate, I don't come from a non-union face. I heard you say something about developers. This doesn't affect them, providing that they're using safe cranes.
Just that they contacted me and had some questions that I don't know if I could.
That's, and that's fine. And to be quite honest, I'd be willing to answer any questions. I'd be willing to come again, whatever you'd like. I'm into educating people.
I'm sure next month, though, as to, if you're here, you could be one of the people that could answer.
That's fine. Sure. I'd be more than happy.
But that's just, that's the reason why I asked for it to be.
No problem. I understand. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience? Anybody online? Any questions online for O seven? So, Mr. La Palooza, you're moving a motion to postpone?
Motion to table till next month.
And a second?
Second.
And on the motion to postpone, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. La Palooza?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
No, I don't think we should table safety.
O eight is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 7 Traffic, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held November 10th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of December 15th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution giving the ordinance second reading is moved by the council president. Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. La Palooza?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, "An Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 7 Traffic." And the council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. What is this? This is the speaker. Street cleaning. Actually, oh, I think Mr. Carter's going to bring him to speak on it. Did, yeah. He'll talk to you.
Good evening, council. Thomas Carter, Public Works Director, City of Bayonne. I'd just like to go on record, I know it's hard for people to move their cars three I'd just like to go on record, I know it's hard for people to move their cars three days a week for street cleaning. You know, you get tickets and everything else, but we do it to keep the streets clean. That's the only defense we have in this times. A lot of people don't get out, clean up in front of their houses anymore. The only way we get to do it is through the street sweeper. So at this time, I would ask the council that, I get it, from three days to two, it doesn't seem like a lot, but it does make a difference, especially on the west side of the street, I mean, excuse me, the east side of the street, the wind blows from the west, and of course, everything from one side of the street blows to the other. So that's why we do the east side of Avenue C, Broadway, and Kennedy Boulevard a few more days a week than we do some of the other streets. So in this instance, I would ask the council to vote no on this, but, you know, it's up to you guys. All right? Thank you.
Any other comments?
I tend to agree with Mr. Carter. We have a, one of the biggest complaints is about the dirty streets. And after listening to Mr. Carter and having another conversation, he thinks it will impact the whole street cleaning along Avenue C, even on the other days. So it's more impactful than originally thought.
And this is the length of Avenue C?
No, it was just from First to Seventh Street, this ordinance.
Seventh Street, that's what I thought.
But, so.
And, Mr. Carter, you're saying you think it'll make a very big difference in the filth and the dirt?
Yeah, and once you take something away, it's to process. We'd have to go back, we'd have to re-sign that area of town. If we decide we want to go back to street sweeping, we then have to put new signs back up again. It also would change the time of the route. The route would then start up by quick, Seven-Eleven, excuse me, on Avenue C. And then people who live further uptown, who are used to the sweeper coming by, say nine fifty, now he's showing up at nine thirty. And they're getting tickets, and they're wondering why the sweeper's coming early, and it just, I think it would cause more confusion than it would, you know, be a benefit to the community.
And I'm concerned about the cleanliness, obviously.
Yeah, I mean.
Have you, your recommendation?
Some days we do go by, it's, you know, it's not as dirty, but if it is dirty, and we're only doing it twice a week, now we come by on Friday, the dirt's been there Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, he may get to Seventeenth Street and be full. Now he's got to pull off his route, go dump, and throw the timing off, and like I said, now people are waiting for the sweeper to come by. He doesn't come by, they think he's not coming by, they leave their car, they get a ticket. Then they're complaining, you know, further uptown that, what's going on with the sweeper?
Right.
So it's, I think it causes more harm than it would, you know, benefit. So that's all.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Anyone else?
We do have one hand raised online from down, about unmuted.
Yes, good evening again. I totally agree with Director Carter. We should be cleaning more, not less. The streets in Bayonne are getting worse and worse. People are throwing garbage out of their cars at night and leaving them next to the cars. The garbage men aren't picking everything up either. So I agree with Director Carter. Please vote no. Thank you.
Anyone else?
No other hand raised online.
Hey, Don, Tom Slurry, Eight West Grant Street. Tom, a couple of questions. On Saturdays, sweeper starts at Fifty-Eighth Street, Avenue C, comes to Forty-Ninth Street, stops, picks his broom up, goes all the way down, and starts here in front of this church. Meanwhile, all the mother streets filled with leaves, garbage. How come we don't keep on continuing straight down?
That was changed before my time.
Mr. Carter, if you're going to talk, can I ask you to come up to a microphone so that people can hear you, especially at home?
No.
I don't disagree, but.
I'm not sure exactly why it is that way. From what I was told, was that years ago, they did the whole side, and then there were some complaints about some neighbors and residents on Saturday didn't want to move their cars. So I believe the council took action back then, and they chopped it up. Like you said, it goes to Forty-Ninth.
And picks up and goes?
Stops, picks back up here, and goes from Twenty-Ninth to, I believe, Sixteenth, and then stops.
And goes?
Yes. So it's the same thing. I agree. I mean, if they want to take action and put that in, I would speak in favor of it. You know, my driver would just have to do a full route on Saturday.
Now, the other question is, in the book, the ordinance book, and I used to work for the city as a code enforcement officer, there's a code there saying that residents are responsible to clean in front of their house under the city ordinance.
Even the curb line.
Right, even the curb line. If they're not going to do it, go after them.
They can be given tickets, yes.
It's getting ridiculous that you guys have to come. I had to ask you to come down Forty-Ninth Street. You did a great job.
Yep, thank you.
Okay? It's not fair that all these other blocks, people, like Gell said, throwing garbage all over the place, did not put their garbage out right, it's getting knocked over, the garbage company, some guys are generous, they'll pick it up, the other guys, drop the box on the ground, leave it. I mean, I've seen boxes getting blown all over Avenue C after the garbage trucks leave.
Litter is our biggest problem, you know, and it does come down to, you know, homeowner responsibility.
My thing is, if you hit their pocket, they're learned.
Director, make sure they're using water. I've had a number of complaints that there's a big dust cloud because there's no water being used.
Yes, sometimes when it's run out of water, they run out of water. We have to use certain hydrants in town to fill up with water. We can't just use any hydrant that's on the side of the road. The other thing is, with the way the ordinances are written, they need to be updated as far as enforcement going after homeowners or landlords, store owners. I mean, Broadway, we got a crew of six guys that walk up and down Broadway.
I see them.
Every day, they clean Broadway. By nine o'clock, it looks clean. By eleven o'clock, it's dirty again. They go back out. We even have them branching off and doing any adjacent side streets, you know, from, you know, down to E, and they go up and down, do whatever they can. We have another crew that goes around of five guys that we hit problem areas every day they're out there. We have two sweepers. So on any given day, twenty to twenty-five percent of the workforce is picking up litter, when we could be doing other things. You know, we still have to clean the parks, you know, we pick up the regular garbage in all our parks and all the city cans. So it would help, you know, I don't want to complain about the residents not doing it, you know, I get it, it's COVID, some of them are older.
Sorry.
But it would be nice if once in a while they would get out there, even if it's once every three months, you know? Come out, clean up in front. It would just help us out a lot. We can't, like I said, we can't do every block. We tried to do, we closed the blocks. For a while, we were putting up the no parking signs, closed a whole block like we did on Forty-Ninth. Okay, that's all right.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. No, with anything else on this ordinance, this is First Street, but all, couldn't we just stay within the confines of the topic?
Gotcha.
Thank you. You could talk at open comment.
That's why I let him speak.
You could come up at open comment. But this is on, if you've got to talk, is this on the First Street? This is on the street cleaning?
First Street or?
This is an ordinance about the adjusting traffic for First to Seventh Street. Okay, then you can come up for a public comment, please. Do we have any other comments on this particular ordinance?
No others. I'll take a motion to close.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nedrowski?
Aye.
And resolution ordering final passage.
Don't move.
Second.
And on the resolution for final passage, Mr. Carroll.
No.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Is this to vote up or down?
This is for vote, this is for final passage, yes or no?
Canceling the recleaning or not?
Oh, for canceling this recleaning?
You voted correctly. I mean, you voted not to cancel it, if that's what you wanted. I don't know.
I vote no.
And I vote no.
Okay. And ordinance is failed passage. And now is for the public comments.
Okay, well.
Do we want to start with Ms. Wilson, if she has her hand raised?
Sure.
Is Ms. Wilson still online?
I'm going, she doesn't have her hand raised, unmuted, on my side, she, she somehow did it, so.
Okay.
Ms. Wilson, if you're there and would like to speak, just raise your hand again.
Oh, there you go.
How's everybody doing?
I'm good, Stephanie, and I just want to offer our sympathies and condolences on your loss.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Two things. I wanted to know where the council was at as far as finding a place, because due to a situation beyond our control, we cannot, no longer occupy St. Vincent's school classroom anymore, so we have to move all our stuff to the new storage space in the back of Bayonne, and we're paying a thousand dollars a month for two spaces. If we keep paying a thousand dollars a month for two spaces, then we don't know what we're going to do. I know it's Christmas time, and you guys are about to kick off election, but I wanted to know where we're at to find us a temporary spot.
I have no update for you, Stephanie, sorry.
I've had a few conversations. I'm sad to say, at this moment, I have nothing permanent, but I've spoken with our law director, and he has an opinion at this point, I believe. We spoke to a few people.
Yeah, we're trying to find cold storage. The first two avenues ended up nowhere, so now we're looking at a third potential vendor for that, someone that has cold storage that can provide space for you to store the food in the cold storage environment. But we don't have anything concrete yet.
Everything that's being said at these meetings are being recorded, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, I want everybody to take this with respect. I know election time is here, and people are going against each other to win, to make Bayonne a better place to be. Some people are going to be ugly, some people are going to be nice, I really don't care. But at the last meeting, I felt attacked by Peter Franco. And I know Peter Franco's the type of person that will jump on the bandwagon to help whoever he feels that he feels that should win. I have no problem with that, because I have the same feelings. But I am not going to take personal attacks. So I ask that this is recorded, so if Peter Franco and Erica Daughtry, he personally attacking me when I come to a meeting or I have something to say, then I am going to go the legal route and press charges, because it doesn't make sense. Because at the end of the day, win or lose, there's no extra money going in Erica's pocket, there's no extra money going in Peter Franco's pocket, and there's no extra money going in my pocket. Play how you want to play, but when it's personal attacks against me and my family, I am not going to play that game, especially now. My child lost her grandmother two months ago, she's lost her father a week ago. Her grandmother's birthday is tomorrow, and we're burying her father on Saturday. I take very personal, personal when it comes to my child, because I'm the only parent that she has left. So, so I need to talk to those two people and ask them nicely, leave me alone and back And that's all I have to say tonight.
Understood, Stephanie.
Everyone for the condolences, I want to thank Mr. La Palusa for calling personally, coming over to make sure Jay had everything that she wanted or needed. I want to thank the, Mr. Carter always puts out trash in the last three weeks at the different locations that we had in Bayonne. If you notice, we're in Bayonne now every weekend, and we're in other cities. So we have enough volunteers that we're splitting up in two different cities every single weekend. So that's why we need storage. Everybody have a good holiday, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephanie, and again, we offer our heartfelt condolences on your loss.
My name is Robert Archibald, and I'd like to speak about this ordinance number five. First of all, as qualifications, I worked at that facility for close to thirty-four years. I was a union rep, chief steward. I was on the safety committee for thirty-two of those years. I was also part of the hazmat team. So I was very concerned about safety. I was a master chief chemical operator, which was the highest title you could get there. I operated a lot of reactors down there for a long time. My concern is, I keep reading, first of all, I see it says CAS CHEM. I want you to know, I retired as it was Vitellus, so I don't know why it's been called CAS CHEM, you know? It does have a long history in this town. It came here from, was Baker Castor on eighteen fifty-seven in Jersey City, came to Bayonne in nineteen twelve. Nineteen sixty-nine, it became N.L. Industries. Nineteen eighty-one, two gentlemen bought the facility, and it created Cambrex, starting with CAS CHEM, and that maintained until nineteen years ago when it became Vitellus. I saw all the changes. Now, it wasn't just hydrogenated castor oil, it was a lot of other stuff, a lot of solvents, a lot of stuff like MEK, which is methyl ethyl keton, MDA, which is mondoa diisocyanite, not a good thing. And one of my favorites, TDI, which we did openly work with it from time to time, and if you read the MSDS, it says that one with is two-hundred times more exposure than you can get in your lifetime. Well, I have personal protection equipment, and I still have a lung condition, I have to use an inhaler every day for the rest of my life because of the substances I work there. Why am I saying all this? I'm not here just to, you know, throw out my stuff. I'm concerned. I've been watching it being turned down, I kind of miss it, you know, even though I retired from there about six and a half years ago. But to think that you want to build on it so quickly, Texaco has been empty for thirty years, and now you're finally going to build on it. I don't know how you're going to put swimming pools, and houses, and condos, and hotels, and everything that I've been hearing. That place has got to be deconed real good, and it's going to take time. And I'm just warning the public now, I'm leaving this town, but I don't want to hear like twenty years from now, when I'm, you know, in the wheelchair going, wow, all these kids are getting cancer that live there now. Because that's one of my biggest fears. I mean, listen, it's a great place. Bayonne, Bayonne wants to keep building, that's all you keep building. I know, because I have trouble parking every day, so I know there's more building going up. Seen the churches going down. I see it every day, and I understand it, you know, there's a lot of competition. Hoboken became One Way, Jersey City has bloomed out, and now Bayonne. But I mean, to focus on something like this and say, oh, we're ready to build on it, and we're talking about building higher, and I'm like, are you really? You know, I'm surprised I don't glow in the middle of the night, and I'm being honest, I'm not saying that as a joke. I know, most of you people should know people that work down there, and they could tell you the stuff that we work with, and it wasn't always fun, it wasn't all, and you dealt with it. And Castor Oil is a great thing, it's in everything, but there's a lot of negatives to it, too. So I want this council to know, I want this city to know, it's not an overnight thing that you can do down there, and I fear for that. I fear for the people of Bayonne, the people that are going to go down there and say, hey, look, we're in Bayonne, we're on the waterfront. Yeah, but it's not going to be safe. And that's my concern, and I just wanted to say that to you, because, you know, like again, I'm moving out of this city, and I would hate to see the legacy that, you know, that a place like that is going to cause somebody harm. It's really, it keeps me up at night sometimes, so I just want to share that. Thank you.
Jay, I'd just like to, you know, it's not going to be built right away, and that land will have to, there'll be an LS RP, and that will have to meet the qualifications and pass the environmental protection agencies restrictions. I mean, they test that, they'll make sure that soil's clean and everything, they will be tested, and it will have to be approved and released before they can build on it.
Chairman, I expect nothing else, but again, working in that facility and watching Texaco go down, watched all the tanks go down, they brought these big trucks in, rock sifters, they were sifting these giant rocks, and they took all this stuff out, this was, then they put soil, and then more soil, and I'd say about maybe six or seven years ago, I'm guessing at that, there was truckloads coming, they never stopped. It never stopped. It was like, wow, how much dirt can they really put there?
They will have to.
And they still haven't built there. So I'm just saying, as a concern, a concerned citizen who worked there, who knew what was going on down there, that I just want to address it, that somebody addresses to the floor that it's going to be a long time. You know what? You might all be old and gray before you can put the first nail in the first piece of board down there. But, you know, I needed to say that. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Archibald, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
Ms. Frazier?[1763.01]
Ms. Frazier?
Good evening, my name is Lucia Frazier, I live at 102 Avenue A. Before I start, I'd like to thank Tommy Carter and his department for all the help you gave me. With the last storm, I had over three feet of water pouring out of my drain in my garage, and Mr. Carter's crew came in and took all our furniture and everything away, and I really appreciate that, Tom, thank you. I want to talk about life down Fourth Street and Avenue A where I live. For years, we dealt with the bridge project in back of my house. For years, we took the light down so all the trucks and all the equipment can pass by. Now, we're looking at the Amazon building. We have trucks every 15 minutes, I know yous all know this, day and night, coming through, can't sleep. Avenue A has become a highway. I can't, not only me, none of my neighbors, we can't pull out of our driveways, it's almost impossible. Are we going to get a light?
It was approved, the administration said they were getting one, I don't know what the status is, you'd have to check with the mayor's office unless somebody hasn't paid on it?
I was told years ago by Bill Young, who worked for the Port Authority, that they had given a check to the city of Bayonne to replace the light, and that's like three years ago. It's dangerous down there. That's a very, very dangerous corner. You've got trucks coming in and out, you've got a lot of traffic coming down from the boulevard, coming along Avenue A. We have three major building developments that are going to be going on. That means more traffic. Are they going to do a traffic study? That's a question. We had in front of our house, I don't know what you'd call it, like a speed regulator?
The sign that tells people, reminds them of the speed limit, yes, we moved it down there?
There was a policeman that came only one day, one night, and gave out three speeding tickets. If a policeman was there every single night, they'd be giving out speeding tickets like crazy. Something has to be done, I mean, it's dangerous. Right across the street, this is another thing, can't we get a stop for pedestrians? If I'm parked on the opposite side of the street, I can't get across the street with groceries, nobody will stop and let you go, no one. Some blocks have the stop for pedestrian signs, we're like the forgotten souls downtown, I mean Sharon knows, Sharon lives a block away from me.
It is, it is a challenge to cross the street there. I have mentioned it, I had ex, Mr. Carter did paint the crosswalks, which need to be repainted because they're all gone already. I did ex Chief Geisler, and he put that sign down there for a few days to remind people that they're speeding. We have requested the light a number of times, like you said, the money has been told that it was there. I've also, we've been told that Amazon was going to put a light in. Again, unfortunately, that we don't have that communication that would have to come from the administration as to where that stands, but I am right there with you, I know it's been promised for a number of years.
I have to add, I sat down with Director Kuber because someone from the area that lives right there next to you on Avenue A, and they complained about the speeding, so Director Kuber said he was going to have police officers there set up, and that was what he told me. Now, he hasn't got back to me with.
Director Kuber's here, I don't know if he wants to comment.
Director Kuber, is he here?
Yes, I passed that on to Senator James Gergel from the police department.
So you're not the only one that was complaining about that?
No, I'm a supporter of what the neighbors are here. It's an issue. And just one other thing I want to talk about, we're talking about the dirty streets, ever since Amazon has come, the amount of garbage in front of our houses is pathetic. Just coming here tonight, I went to get in my car, and one of those cellophane plastic containers that a sandwich would be in, it's just thrown in the street in front of my car. I'm out there every day, rubber gloves on, picking up water bottles, Pringle containers. Some of the people on the opposite side of the street actually put garbage cans on the dead end, so the people would put the garbage in. I don't know, we don't know what to do, we're out there cleaning, I mean, with this COVID virus, do you think I want to be out there picking up somebody else's garbage? But we are. I mean, can someone, I don't know what you do about this with the Amazon situation, but it's really gotten, it's very dirty down by us. You don't have to see it when you walk the dogs.
It's enforcement. Like Director Carter said, there is already ordinance on the books about literate and putting your garbage out correctly and keeping your curb clean, but it comes down to enforcement. The administration has to enforce the laws and ordinances that are on the books.
I think we need, as a council as a whole, to be updated on the status of that money that you mentioned here tonight, and where it stands with the administration, and be briefed on that. Second, Director Carter, would it be possible to place a public garbage can in an area that would be suitable on Avenue A that might help this situation?
I, before I commit to it, I'll go down and check to see if I can put one in the location, because a lot of people don't want a can in front of their house.
Well, you know what, Tom, if you did it like on corners.
On the Amazon side.
And yet, you go down.
You are on the east side, which the wind blows.
Right, exactly.
You get everybody else's thoughts, and I understand that. And as far as the light goes, I believe, and the whole we talked about, I thought that that was part of Amazon's redevelopment plan.
This is what I mean, like.
What happened was it was different, so that would have to be either planning rezoning or, I don't know, Sumac or Rob Russo, our engineer, may be able to look into that to find out if they are responsible for that, because everyone keeps saying it, but I don't know where it is and why. It's not under my.
No, I understand that.
But I can find out.
Yeah.
It's approved in every development plan, and if so, where are I on the spass of that?
It has to be done, there's something serious is going to happen.
The driveway there, to accommodate, the trucks coming in, that was part of where the light was set up, it was where.
Well, the light was on the opposite side, right.
Yes, and that it's there, they're going to have to put one on the inside. The old light was only one light. Current standard would require them to put a light on the inside, so we'll find out where that is.
With the amount of traffic that comes through there, I don't see why, I mean, it should be done. Either if it's not, say like on Fourth, then on Fifth Street, but there's no light, the last light is on North Street.
North Street.
To First Street, they're flying. It's a miracle there's been no accidents. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I hope we can resolve this issue soon.
And while we are looking into traffic lights, can we also get an update on where the traffic light that's been promised on 49th Street and Avenue C, which is another horrific, very dangerous intersection? A number of pedestrians have been hit in that area, and I know that light has been promised a number of times, even in print, in black and white in the newspaper. So maybe we can get an update on that traffic light also.
Now, we're going to switch, are there any?
Your hand raised, that money.
Okay.
I'm going to unmute you.
Not now, not now.
Yes, I'm sorry, I know you have a long agenda on file, but I just have to say something. Everybody's talking about the administration, they need to do things. We have the ordinances on the books, let's start utilizing them to ensure that with all this building going on in the city, that people are taking care of their properties so that the buildings will provide new homeowners and new tenants with a clean city for a change? Please, let's start holding people accountable. It's in their job description to serve the city of Bayonne, enough already. Mr. Mayor, start utilizing the ordinances, please. People are being unsafe with no lights and garbage around their property, this is totally not Bayonne, or not the Bayonne that I grew up in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
There was another hand?
We have a hand.
Peter Franco also has a data race online that I'm muted.
Good evening, everyone, Peter Franco, 109 West 53rd Street in Bayonne. I understand ordinance one and two on this evening's agenda is postponed until next month, but I have a statement I would like to read on the record regarding that. But before I get into that, I want to thank Jackie McNulty of Public Works for all her help with any issue I or my neighbors have. I can imagine how much more difficult her job became when the city changed garbage companies, new schedules began, and both pickup was reduced to twice a month. Yet Jackie always gets the job done, and I'm so grateful, she's a huge help to my dad, and I just wanted to acknowledge her tonight.
Agreed, Jackie's a godsend.
Absolutely.
So to address a comment that was mentioned earlier, 501(c)(3) is typically responsible for themselves, they can fundraise and seek donations for anything that they need, but I do want to thank the entire city council for doing everything it can to find a location for this organization. It's a great organization, and I hope it gets what it needs to continue to assist addressing the food insecurity issues that affect many Bayonne residents. Now, on to my statement regarding the hospital ordinance. You know, I feel there's been a lot of dishonest politicking going on with this hospital issue, a lot of press releases, letters in support, but not a lot of real answers coming from the mayor's office as to why he's in favor and supports surgical. Everyone's entitled to their opinion, and it's simply my opinion that the city should not be in charge of choosing who runs a private hospital, but the mayor has a different opinion, and that's fine. Our mayor believes he should be in charge of who runs the hospital. And if I asked him just one question, I would ask, which entity has the experience of running the hospital? Because it's not surgical. Hudson Regional, HRH, has a track record of not only running hospitals, but taking failing hospitals and turning them into successful ones. I would love to, you know, hear the mayor's reasoning as to why, you know, he is in such support of this, but not really explaining to the public as to why he feels so strongly and adamantly about this. So I know I'm not going to get an answer tonight because there's not attendance at these meetings, but I would love, you know, to hear something from him, and, you know, he has plenty of avenues to speak about it, you know, whether it's the community news or to any one of the media, and I think the public deserves that answer. Because it's not about losing our hospital, it's about who the mayor wants to run it. And he just hasn't explained to us why he feels this organization is much more better than other offerings that are out there. So thank you, city council, have a great evening, a Merry Christmas, happy holidays, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Solari?
Good evening. Dave at Solari, 16, Colonego Drive.
Glad to see you're feeling better, Dave.
Yeah, long time. Couple of questions first, with the MUA, with SUEZ, the generator was taken away from the pump station up at Country Village, did we get the new one in there yet, or does anybody know?
Even though it was taken away, I.
Does anybody know where it is? Because that's an expensive generator.
No one knows anything about it, but that's not surprising.
Okay, well, you know, I figured that. Do we know about the windmill? Who's in charge of this now? Any of all this?
Well, the director now is Gary Shimlouski, but we've had extensive conversations with the windmill operator, both internationally and domestically over the past.
Who's we, I mean?
John Armstrong as the engineer in the law department with there. We talked to their European side three weeks ago, and that, can't say that went well, but then we had a very good conversation with the domestic side out of Colorado 10 days ago or so, and we're following up on that, Mr. Armstrong and I will be following up on that.
All right, the only reason why I'm saying this is, and I know you have in the law department, the Bible of the whole thing, it's this thick, just like I have it, okay? We've been doing too much for them already, and I've been telling you this all the time. They have it where they're supposed to maintain that, they're supposed to ensure that and everything, and they didn't do it. They're supposed to clean the sewers, Public Works now does that. Everything is on to Public Works, Public Works, Public Works. Why are we paying all this money to SUEZ? They're charging us, our water rates are going up and up and up, and we're paying, and Public Works is doing their job. All right, I mean, I just don't understand, somebody has to get to the top of this, it's crazy. Let's get to the street cleaning, all right? I sat with the mayor before the first term was up, and he promised me side street sweeping, another lie, okay? I just want to tell this council, it was a lie. He just wants to blow smoke up your butt, and that's it. Yes, Dave, I'll get it done, we're going to do it, it's in the agenda. Well, it's seven years now, and I haven't seen any side street sweeping. The Third Ward, Gary, I have to say something, it's dirty. If you don't think it's not dirty, call me one day, and I will take you around town because I don't know, and same thing with Mr. Perez and Sharon, you guys are at large, so you guys take care of the whole town, okay? And if you guys all think that Bayonne's not dirty, call me and I'll take yous around town, especially in the Third Ward, Gary, all right? Last month's meeting, I know I couldn't attend, but I heard you say, well, you know what it's like to get Conrail to cut the weeds and this and that. What happened? Do you go to 440 at all from the boulevard? I'm not, I'm just curious, because you know why? The state hasn't cut any of those weeds along those people's houses that everything is growing over. I know you don't live there, but if you lived there, you would have that all cut. I'm just going to say right now, this is how you politicians all work, all right? If it's your house, you do it, you'll get them to cut it.
Dave, things are not as easy as it seems.
Yeah, well.
And I wasn't even here last month.
I understand that, but.
So I don't know what you're saying, I said last month.
I just said that I heard that it was, now, we all know how it goes, okay? It has to get done, you had the whole summer to do it, and nobody does it, you know? I don't know if you drive that way, Mr. Perez, to go to 440, don't you see that and say, wow, these are my citizens, these are my people, you know, they're going to vote for me. I wouldn't vote for you, knowing how many times you passed there? Forget it, okay? Now, I think I heard, I don't know if it was last month or the month before, you know, that you can't blow stuff in the street, it's against the law. Is that correct?
That is correct.
It's against the law, okay. Then how come the city could blow all the stuff in the street?
Are you talking about the sweeper?
No, no. They blow the sidewalk, they have the UEZ blowing everything into the street, it's illegal.
I think they blow it into the street and then sweep it up.
Sweep it up.
Absolutely, but at the time, the sweeper is not there yet, okay? So that stuff is still blowing all over the place. Number two, it's an ordinance, every store owner's supposed to clean in front of the store. Why are we doing it? Why is UEZ doing, why is Public Works doing it? We shouldn't be doing it. Look, letting them off the hook, I'd like to have them come down Country Village and blow everything around, too. It's filthy in Country Village, because you know why? They're all tenants, the owners don't live there no more. It's not like years ago when I bought that in 1993, all right? Jay Coffey was my lawyer on the closing there in 93, all right? It was a great, it was a great area, people cleaned up all over the place. You know, I've got cars still sitting in front of my house and the next house, all New York cars. Where are they coming from? I don't understand. You know, maybe we should start making that a permit area soon. It's been sitting there for two weeks already, two and a half weeks. There's a black car and another car, sitting there for two weeks, at 16 and 18. I don't understand, you know.
I know, I can, we'll speak to traffic.
I'm paying high.
Get the right things done.
I'm paying high taxes, I'm paying over, close to $13,000, I'm only down by $50 and I'll be at $13,000, all right? Okay. Last month, I believe it was last month, I heard the young lady say, what was your agendas for the seven years you guys have been on here? And I know Mr. Carroll came on late, he just came on recently, and his thing was, stop signs. You're a councilman and you said a stop sign? You know. You know...
There was a fair amount more than that.
Yeah, well, that's not what you just said. You just said stop signs. That was your thing.
Okay.
Well, you know, I just want to say one thing, Mr. Carroll. Last month, you said it was a stop sign, whatever you want to say, it is. But let me tell you something. The only thing you're there for, and that you were there for when you first came on, was building, building, building. You guys are giving out all these abatements, and the people that are paying are people like us and you guys. You guys don't realize, because you know why? You guys just want to have it built. You're making that extra 20-something thousand dollars to pay your taxes. How about all these seniors that could just barely live in? You guys don't care. I know you don't care.
Well, you're wrong.
All right? I just want to say one thing. This, this came out, and I don't know if anybody saw this, but Dirty Davis, all right? So I guess this must be true. Dirty Davis, maybe dirty council people, too. Who knows? Why wasn't that not on here, maybe? Maybe not all the council, maybe some, all right? We have garbage, okay? Garbage? So I guess we have garbage in this town. Garbage all over the place. But, you know, Mr. Carroll, you're only there for yourself and only yourself. I'm telling you right now, that is it. Because let me tell you something. We had a mayor eight years ago, and you went against him. You stabbed him right in the back, all right? That was Mayor Smith. You stabbed your own uncle right in the back. So if you think that I'm gonna believe anything that you're gonna say, forget it. I'm done. I'm done. Let's go to Mr. Perez. All right, Mr. Perez? All of a sudden, the school has piles of garbage bags. Now, oh wait, we gotta get that all cleaned up, because you know why? It's in your area. Your area, not my area. If it was my area, you wouldn't care. You don't care because you passed to go to 440, and you see that little dump there. You don't do nothing else, so why would you worry about anybody in that area? You don't care. You only worry about 39th Street, 38th Street, and that's it. That's all you do. So you know what? Maybe you should be part of Dirty Davis. Think about it, because you know what? This is all, I don't know where this came out, of Washington. How did Washington know about this? I just don't understand this. This is crazy. Washington comes in here to say, our town is dirty, all right? Mr. Abalusa, I agree, yes, you do do some good things, but you know what? In the last couple of years, I've been very disappointed. I don't have to tell you what's going on. You're, you're a veteran. You're a veteran council person. You've been around a long time, so you know the ropes, okay? I'm not gonna put you in the Dirty Davis situation, but you're getting close to it, all right?
I have to disagree. I did several cleanups a year.
You know, yeah, well, let me tell you...
Even in your area, I did one.
No, you were never in my area.
But you weren't around to see it.
You were never...
I don't know where you were. You were...
You were never in my area. Never in my area, all right?
Not true.
Where do you clean up? Near the McDonald's?
Not true.
Near the little pump station there?
Nope.
I'm just saying, but, I'm just saying. I'm just gonna end it in a few things, is that we have things to do here, okay? Now, I know we're gonna have an election coming up, and good luck, Sharon, in your thing, and I know Dirty Davis is gonna run his group.
Um, okay. Just keep it...
But wait, wait, I'm just saying one thing. Whatever goes on, I hope that you keep my friend, the law director, Jay Coffey, because he is a great guy.
And he pulls down your hat.
And he does, he does his job. So I don't care which, which mayor wins. If you win, you got my support, but I'm just saying right now, this is crazy. And if somebody could tell me how Bayonne could get cleaned, and how Country Village could get cleaned, and part of the third ward could get cleaned, I'm for it. But anytime anybody wants to see where it's dirty around town, you could call me. It's not hard to find me. You'll find me in a lot of places. You'll find me in Benanty's Deli in the morning if anybody wants to find me. But that's where you can find me. You know where to find me, Gary.
And Dave, we're gonna check on 16 and 18 Colonial Drive.
You know, so...
Could check on that.
I'm gonna just leave it like this, and I'm just gonna, I wanna wish everybody here a Merry Christmas, a happy and healthy new year to all of yous, all right? And let's hope next year is better. Thank you, and a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Carter, can you reach out to Conrell about cleaning up along 440 there?
The Conrell along 440?
Yes, by, you know...
He's complaining about the back of the houses.
Yeah.
It's the back of the backyard. There's a white vinyl fence, which, I know I've been to your office several times to talk about that. I've also talked about, Paul Silverman called me about an area behind the houses on, um, Sub...
Sunrise? Sunset?
Uh, no, no, no.
Sycamore, excuse me. I'm sorry, I got a little tongue tied. So behind Sycamore Road, there's an empty tract of land as well, and a developer named Paul Silverman, or landowner, whoever he was, called me and asked me if I could do the work, which I can't because it's a conflict of interest. I asked him to contact somebody else, but Jackie and you, I know I spoke to both of you about that.
There's three different landowners that own that district.
Right. So that's where, Dave, it's not so easy to find out who owns this, who's supposed to take care of it, and I can't have Public Works just go out and do something.
No, no, they, Public Works can follow up on it.
I could told you who owned that developer for a long time. SUEZ sold that off for a while.
Right. Yeah.
But there's three different owners that'll get tract of land.
Yes, there is, yes. You're absolutely right. But you know what? I wouldn't find it a conflict of interest if you wanted to take on that job and, and, and...
When I had several homeowners call me, it is a conflict of interest.
But bring it out, bring it out to the public and say, this is what it is. Now, everybody knows.
The public is there, man.
I, I wouldn't find that.
My company couldn't do it.
Dave, we'll, we'll have, DP Governor should follow up.
Yeah, but that's not just the area I'm worried about.
Someone from the administration has those contacts.
You know...
And we could track it down. That is, we have workers, and that's their job, and, and we will do it.
You know, I think that we should have side street sweeping.
I don't disagree.
I've been saying that, and the only two people way back in the day was the late Dottie Harrington and Joe Mikowski. They were the only two that were for it.
I'm, I'm not against it either.
No, I believe you.
But Mayor Collins told me, he wasn't mayor at the time, I think he was an aide to Mayor Doria, since I go back that far. And he said that was the most amount of hate mail he ever got, was when they talked about putting side street sweeping.
Absolutely, and the biggest person that were against it at that time was made inform. Because, made, made inform. They were the biggest ones against it because they were the big people in Bayonne at the time, you know? Okay?
No, I mean, yes, thank you.
Mr. Carter, didn't we have a pilot program where we actually did that? We volunteered people to please move their cars, and we went to all the wards to clean, and we had no cooperation whatsoever?
Yeah, what we do is when we see streets and blocks that are routinely dirty, or we get a complaint, residents call up and say, my neighbors don't clean up, I'm the only one. What we'll do is we post no parking signs, and then we'll have everybody move their cars. We bring the sweeper. We use blowers, it's got the law to blow into the street and leave it there. You can blow as you're cleaning, just like when you sweep, you sweep into the street and then you pick it all up. But you do have to pick it up. That's the, the key. Landscapers, there's no way for them to sweep everything, but when they do blow it, they all pick it back up again. If they don't, they're in violation, they should get a ticket. But as far as the street sweeping, people were not moving their cars. We were then faced with the task of, do we ticket them, tow them? And then they complain. We get more calls about not wanting to move their car, and that people should clean up in front of their house, and they don't. We've looked into a portable vacuum system that we're gonna try to use that can go down the block, and if they're not gonna move, we're able to vacuum out the curbs, because if people aren't gonna do it, at the end of the day, it falls on Public Works. And it's not the mayor's fault, Dave. It's not the council's fault. Garbage, at the end of the day, falls on Public Works Director. That's my job to make sure the city's clean. I can't do it by myself or with the manpower I have. If we want to hire more people and put them out there to work, I'm more than happy to do that. Bond for more sweepers, we can do that, but it's gonna cost money, which is gonna raise your taxes. What we really need is the whole town to get together and realize, yeah, we're dirty, let's clean up. I have older people on my block. My old man tells me all the time, did you clean up out front? Yeah, Pop, I took care of it. What about next door? Because she's an older woman, she doesn't get out all the time. She does get out there and clean it, and then she'll clean in front of my old man's house. But neighbors gotta be neighbors again, and people gotta start cleaning up. That's what it comes down to. If you want to clean town, we all gotta chip in. We can't point the finger, it's easy. His fault, his fault, her fault. It's not their fault, it's our fault collectively as a group.
I mean, you're absolutely right.
And we have to do something.
You're absolutely right, but you have maybe 60% of the people in my area that don't live there, they rent everything now, and, and the people that own it aren't...
Tommy, I'm sorry, I'm gonna bring this back to order. We're not having back and forth conversations. Mr. Carter, you were asking a question from, from Mr. Councilman Perez.
All right. I, I don't know what the rules are anymore, so I'll just...
Tommy, every April...
It goes sometime before.
Tommy, every April, we have a cleanup. Every April, where all the people in the city get together, and we sweep the street.
Earth Day.
Earth Day. You're invited to come, Mr. Solari, okay?
No, Mr. Solari.
Solari.
Solari, you're invited to come. In fact, you can join my team.
What if I want to join your team? I appreciate the work you've been doing and the work that you've been doing. You're the one that's helping.
Tom, Dave, no, no, you already had your time, your time's up. I'm sorry. Councilman Carter?
The one that said that the taxes are going up, 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 that's when he was running.
Dave, Dave, you're out. No, Dave, you're, you're, you're done.
The taxes are up, and he's...
Dave, you're done. You have to sit down.
And he's still raising the taxes on us. Stop giving the abatements out, and we'll have it.
Thank you, Dave.
But stop giving the...
Can you, can you wait till we...
I also want to thank the many, many civilian individuals that have joined an initiative I started, Clean Sweeps. The Scouts have joined, many, many, many civilian individuals have joined. We've done our part as a community, as civilians, and again, in all this, and I can see what's coming down the line, it's a shame, but with the department being disparaged, and with the citizens of this town being disparaged for the work they're doing by those that aren't doing it, I think it's a shame, and I just want to say publicly thank you to all those that have given their time and participated.
My Ellen, next speaker.
Ms. Riscart. Uh, she's, is she back there? Oh, yes, she is, okay. Hush.
Good evening. Could you just state your name or, and address, please?
I'm so exhausted, I apologize.
That's okay.
Cheryl Riscart, 19 West 19th Street, Bayonne, New Jersey. Council, I've been up here twice already, in reference to being forced out of my house into the street to be disgraced, make a movie about, and eventually drop dead. I need you to get to the mayor, to get to the governor, to solve this problem. Who gave Michael Boschwick the authority to disgrace my name and make a movie about me and harass me with a toxic material every day? I cannot go on like this anymore. The truth is gonna come out. I will go before a judge. I will do anything I have to do to get this story out and the truth. I don't know who's doing this. I know it's above you, it's out of your hands, but the mayor is the mayor, and all you had to do was shake your head and say, I'm not gonna do this. If your life is being threatened, nobody would want what's going on with me to happen to them. I understand that, but it needs to stop. I'm not gonna go to jail, I'm not gonna put my life at risk for anyone. This person is a very, very sick individual and needs to get off the streets. Whoever gave him the money to do what he's doing is also a very sick individual, and this is all because of greed for money. That's what the, that's what it comes down to, to disgrace my name. Anybody needs to hear this story, I will tell you in full. No, right, I don't know the governor, I saw him leaving the mayor's office one day. If he's involved, shame on him, and shame on the mayor. And Sharon, I do hope you win. This man needs to get out of office, just one thing after another with him. But all I know is my life has been taken from me, my family, and my friends, and it's a disgrace. This man needs to get off the streets, and the devices he has, and where he got them from, for what he's doing to me, needs, needs to be taken away from him. It needs to stop.
Thank you, Sharon.
He's not an actor.
I know, I returned, I spoke with you on the phone when you called, so...
Thank you, council. Sharon, good luck. Thank you, council.
Have a good holiday.
You, too.
Mr. Torillo.
Katie Torrell, 159 West 3rd Street. Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Bayonne Pal, as you all well aware. I'm the executive director over there. I'd like, especially would like to thank Mr. Coffey for our lean times that we had, that he so generously donated his time. Mr. Coffey, thank you. I do not forget. At that time, I guess everyone here, we've all been at the Pal, correct? I mean, I think I seen you Sunday, you Sunday, you threw up the opening tap. Madeline, I see your grandkids every day, they're there, okay? The Pal has been instrumental in this town since 1947. Next year will be our 75th anniversary, God given. This week alone, to show you how much our kids are involved in the community, we were involved with the Knights of Columbus for toy drives. They donated over 300 toys for the boys and girls. We have Santa come to be giving it away. On Saturday, with Captain Carlos Bentoncourt, we did Shop with a Cop, where an officer took a needy child around with a $100 gift card. On Sunday, they all were present, right? We had 3, 400 people there. These are all sponsors. You see the good work we do with these children, and it's basically one of the last surviving things of Bayonne's past. I don't know if we are going to make it any longer. We have been, like so many other nonprofit organizations, we've been hit with lawsuits. Untimely lawsuits, lawsuits that date back to 1968 and 1969. I'm here tonight because I've spoken to Mayor Davis numerous times, and I've had the Pal attorney call Mr. Coffey numerous times, because in my letter to the mayor, after I spoke to him, I sent him an email, and it's basically, it's come down to this, and you'll see where I'm going with this. Mayor Davis, thank you for the opportunity of meeting with you on Friday the 12th, I'm sorry, November 12th. Pal, as I explained to you, is under enormous pressure for two lawsuits dating back to the late 60s, early 70s. To say the least, it's causing a big strain on our budget. Pal and the city of Bayonne have a long relationship dating back to 1947. Numerous mayors, such as Mayor Conlon, were very generous to Pal, whether it was for new roofing, air conditioning, the heat breaking down. We know Pal at that time was solely operated by the city of Bayonne. All employers were police officers who were paid by the city of Bayonne. These offices maintained, opened, closed, and operated the Pal until the late 1980s. The Pal has been asking for and has not yet received. We are asking for the city, what insurance was in effect during those years, and it would help us tremendously, so we are now close to $100,000 in attorney fees. The Pal Board is asking if the city can help with these costs, as at the time, the Pal was solely operated by the city of Bayonne. Now, they're not suing the Pal, they're suing the Pal daycare, because Pal and the daycare were...
Mr. Torrello, have you cleared this with your attorney?
Yes, I have. Yes, I have. The problem we have here is we cannot sustain this kind of amount of money to give out. It's impossible for us to operate, and all we've been asking for is the city can look and see who was the insurer during that time period. It certainly was not the PAL daycare center, which did not come into existence until 1976. I don't think that the son should pay for the father's sins. I'm just asking if this counsel would look into this matter swiftly, because at the rate we are going, we're going to have to close our doors. Fifty teams we have this year, 200 daycare children. We have a homework program that's overflowing. I can't afford to pay teachers. This is no end in sight. I just talked to my attorney recently, who said that he has written, Mr. Coffey, and I think one verbal conversation, and we still don't have the record.
And the answer to that...
Someone here has to know. I'd like to make our 75th anniversary, and at this rate, these children will be put out in the street. We don't have the resources for this. If I receive $25,000 a month from Urban League, I'm giving it right to the attorney. I still have to feed these children, I have to pay employees, health insurance, insurance, the list goes on and on. I don't see what's taking so long for us to find out who was the insurance company during that era. I'm asking the council today to please help.
I'm sorry.
I'm gonna say...
I'm sorry, I wanna talk. First of all, Mr. Torrello, I just first want to say, you know, you talked about PAL being what a part of our past it is, but it's also a part of our future. It has to be a part of our future, you're responsible for our future, which is our children. I know the service you provide for an underserved part of our community. It's really not an option to lose you. You provide services that are direly needed in this town for the families that are the most needy. So I just want to say that, like, you know, I think I can speak for the whole entire council that no one wants to see this. We understand the role you play in the community and the service you provide, and that you would just cause a void, that the city would have to pick up anyway, right? We need to provide for our children, our youth, and those who are most vulnerable. That is our job as a council, as a city, is to take care of our residents and make sure they have the proper resources they need, those who are underserved especially. I don't know the, all the ins and outs of your, the legalities of your lawsuit. I do know that you have been waiting for documentation, I'm not sure why it hasn't been provided, really not, it should be provided if we have it.
It's no great pleasure for me to air our laundry.
No, I agree.
And we're not the only organization in this town. There are five other people listening on these also, nonprofit organizations in this town.
So I would ask and mature, and we can take it up as a council, and we can make a decision, and that's our prerogative, and if we want to pass something, and then we were told it's not valid, but I'd like to just right on the fly make a resolution that, you know, that the city offer the PAL all support and information and be a partner in trying to help them, you know? I don't know if my colleagues are up for that, but I think that we should, you know, it's not a resolution that adjusts a resolution of support into the PAL and help them resolve this, and be willing participants and provide them all documentation needed to help them in their legal issues.
The city of Bayonne...
I have a motion.
I want to describe the legal answer to Mr. Torrello's question, and I did have a long, detailed conversation with your attorney a while ago. He sent me a second letter. Is the city of Bayonne was self-insured through the early 90s. We didn't join, we ended up joining a joint insurance fund. I actually don't know what year we joined it, but you're talking about it, somebody took place in 68 and 69. And I know your characterization that it was run by the city, run by the police, and that, you and I had a discussion about this, Katie, about what checks you were firing back and forth between the city and the cops. But the fact of the matter is, there are no insurance policies. We were self-insured at that point in 1968, and I think that Madeline would agree with me that it'd be a task that could not be fulfilled to find insurance policies from 1967 and 1968. I don't know that we, there's nothing back that far that we have.
I don't think we have records.
So the self-insured aspect of it, and counsel president, when you say that you're going to provide support, you better be careful about how you define that support, because what's being asked of us, and the letters that have been written have been couched in terms that, listen, the PAL, while named as a defendant, may or may not have to name the city as a defendant because the city had control over the PAL. And notwithstanding the fact that the pleadings do name an entity that was not in existence in 1968, 69, whenever it could. So, and you and I talked about that, Mr. Torrello.
Yes.
And I talked about with your attorney. They pleaded the wrong party. The party that they want to plead is non-existent, as far as my understanding, is that correct, Mr. Torrello?
Well, I go just by the legal counsel. Again, we have in-house counsel, Mr. Kiechak, this is out of his scope, he recommended these people. This is what they do for a living.
Correct. They defend suits like...
All right, so Jay, some of the things you're saying to me, I do understand, but you have to understand, when you're talking lawyer talk, let's put it out there plain, it's like when I'm talking to my attorney, I have to say, "Slow down, that's not my specialty," okay? I just would want to know, because he said, and I'm just going by saying, that you did not answer the second...
And I provided his letter to our JIF, which the joint...
I'm not aware of that, that's what I'm saying.
I'm telling you this, that this, his letter has been provided to the JIF in order to protect the city of Bayonne's interests, not PAL's interests, city of Bayonne's interests. And the JIF will be assigning counsel to the city of Bayonne, I would expect, insofar as the reference has been made.
So you're telling me, in essence, is you're protecting the city, which owned and operated, and to leave me out cold?
I will not accede to the fact that we owned and operated, there was a separate entity...
No, it was not.
There was a separate entity...
Can I just, can I just, so my question here, so I'm hearing different, Katie was saying that the city, we just disregarding, and my request was to access to at least provide the documentation they're asking for, but I'm hearing from Mr. Coffey that he has forwarded that on, and it is being looked at.
I'm not aware of that.
So if Mr. Coffey's saying that, then I'm satisfied that the city is actually engaging and assisting you and will get them some sort of...
No, they're not assisting us, they're protecting. There's a difference.
Well, he's answering the question, I think he's saying...
No, he said to protect the city.
My job, my job...
I know that you're, Mr. Coffey, you know how mean you are, we've been friends forever, and I understand what you're doing.
I don't think, first of all...
But me on this side, I have to protect my children.
Understood, you know what, this is public comment, so just speak your comment, and that's what we'll do. So you have your say.
No, I have nothing.
No, no, you finish what you're saying, and then we'll, you know, it's really not the proper forum to have this back and forth.
It was hard enough to come up here and bring this out into light. It does nothing for our program.
Understood.
Even though it was in the paper and it stated that it happened back in 1968, it's still a black eye. People just remember things. No one ever remembers the correction, ever. Now, we're gonna have to live with this stain, and we're going to have to close our doors. We cannot function by giving attorneys, and this is only one lawsuit. We haven't even proceeded on the second one, that also names five other entities in the city.
Understood.
No, I'm just, we are going to have to close very quickly. We cannot afford this. And I just want to say, I'll give you every, the official seals and everything, the memos that were signed in '47. When I was there as a child, I was a gym rat. I stayed there my entire life. I can name every police officer who worked there during that time. I spoke to Red about it a few minutes ago, when the PBA used to go in there and use the PBA room. I was the guy that used to clean the beer cans up in the morning. No, that's how life was back then.
Katie, I...
But nobody can tell me that the city did not operate that building.
Katie, that's a legal issue.
They have the keys, they maintained, they closed the building. Not me, not no one else.
I understand that, and I'm letting you have your say, and I'm willing to support you, but we don't...
Yeah, I understand, but what about you, Mr. Cow?
But we don't...
How do you feel about this?
About the AAF?
Yes.
Do you feel like you're an amazing part of our community?
Is there anything that can be done?
The answer was given as far as...
Mr. Perez? I see you, you come down, I might as well put you on my lunch program. You know how I am, but guys, I'm telling you, we're going to close our doors. This is a serious matter. We don't have that kind of cash flow.
Katie, you know, I support the PAL programs.
Yes, you do.
You probably see me the least of everybody...
It doesn't mean that you care less.
But I do care, I know you want to know that.
I know you do.
There are occasions when...
But tabling this is not going to help me. I need someone that's gonna call me to come to the office or get the attorney here, and let's find out which way, before I have to close the doors.
This is the first time I'm hearing about lawsuits from the 60s or anything like this.
I mean, I'm a 50 basketball team, I just paid $15,000 for uniforms, okay? I'm not supposed to lock the door and throw the kids out?
So as much as I want to say, I support you, and I do, I support all your programs, you do. I don't know what Jay's saying about the liability issue, the money involved, all of that. Is there another way that the money could be raised to help you defend yourself? I don't know that. That's what I'm saying, there's a lot of questions here. When I just heard it now, in the last 10 minutes, I don't have an answer for you, and Sharon, if we're gonna do a resolution to support their programs and things like that, I would be in favor of that, but as far as the legal liability issue...
Oh, I didn't mean to take on legal liability, just to say that we support them.
I support them and their programs, and I could say that publicly. The liability issue, I understand what Jay's saying also, so that I would have to just be careful, the way everything is worded. Again, if you give me a little more time, maybe I could put some more effort and research into this.
I would hope somebody will, but because time is not on our side.
Okay, but again, I need more than the 10 minutes to know that, so we'll have to work on this quick.
Katie, thank you for bringing it up to us about this, I had no idea about this.
Well, it's not something you can...
No, but what I want to say is that Jay also enlightened us on issues, so we have to be very careful the way we do this.
I do understand that.
We can't rush into this, we can't jump into conclusion, you know? We have to take it one at a time.
You don't understand, I understand what Mr. Coffey is advising you, and I agree with him, wholeheartedly, okay? But there's times when we need action. I don't need your assurances that we're going to look into it. We don't have the time. Whether a special counsel needs to be called, or something needs to be done, or we're gonna lose over 800 children into the street. And that's truth, and nobody up here, I know nobody wants that up here. Every one of you people up here, I've known you for years, you're big supporters, and I thank you for all of that. I can't thank you enough, I can't thank the community enough, but this time, I can't have anything tabled to drag this out. There has to be some kind of firm solution to this. We're going to court for the final time on the 7th of January. It was dismissed the first time without prejudice, they refiled. So we're running a tight line, especially if they find in favor of the defendant. Please, do I have your assurances at least that you will keep in contact with me?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have my assurance.
Jay, thank you for your time, sir.
Do you want, do you want the specific requests that they're looking for?
No, I don't think it's as appropriate for them.
I agree.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers online?
No hands are raised for help? We just have one more hand raised. I'm Ms. Jane Fisher.
I'm sorry.
Jane Fisher, you are self-muted at this point. I'm mute yourself, you look at the card.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. My name is Jim Fisher, I live on 12th Street, and not here to complain about street sweepers, we sweep our own gutters on 12th Street in the tradition. At both in Broadway, there's a planned 14-story building, which the zoning board calls a 10-story building, because the zoning board agreed to not count four floors as garages floors. Yesterday, that building announced that it was going severely downmarket, from 100 apartments to 128 apartments, more one-bedroom, less two-bedroom. The developer explained that he was unable to attract investors with the mix of apartments that was originally approved by the zoning board. So what we had here was a carpetbagger from Long Island who came and convinced you folks to give him a redevelopment plan, and then went to the zoning board and showed them a building, and it turns out he doesn't even have any investors. And that leads me to a question of, how many speculators do we have that are getting pilots and zoning approval and such, without actually having any money to build anything with? And I'm wondering whether we don't need a regulation that says that if you're going to approach the city of Bayonne and want to build something, you should at least have your investors lined up to begin with. So I'm wondering about that, I don't know if you have the ability to do that, but right now, we have developers that are, basically have known this, this government got a unanimous vote of going from 100 to 128 apartments and up to 135 parking spaces. Now, those of us that have lived on 12th Street since the 1950s, you know, there's not just the one building, there's two of them. There's the one on the south side of Broadway, which is also approved to be a 10-story building. And that'll have about 100 apartments and about 100 cars, too. And despite the fact that we've got two towers right across the street from each other, overshadowing the neighborhood, no one's done as much as a traffic study to say, gee, where are all these cars going to go? Well, most likely, they're gonna want to head for Avenue C, because Broadway and Avenue E are already pretty much chock-a-block. So they'll be coming up 12th Street, and 12th Street has had a problem with traffic for a while. The stoplights that were installed at Broadway and Avenue C create the drag strip. Because they're synchronized, people can go from the quick check parking lot to Avenue C and halfway to JFK, which gives them exactly a quarter mile, and the various risers with their cars on weekends will use 12th Street as a drag strip, and we've complained, and the police really haven't done much about it. So we already have a traffic problem on 12th Street. Now, contrast this with the area around the Cash Cam project. I wasn't at the meeting, but Mr. Fisher, the reporter, was at that meeting on September 22nd of 2001, and the Cash Cam site was commented on by the board as being an area where the current site in the development plan fits that part of the city. One of the members of the board said, just like the rule is set, that whole strip of land from the bridge down to, bridge down, there's nothing but 2,000... there's nothing but two-family houses. So the area of Cascam is considered to be low-density, three-story maximum. And I'm just kind of wondering, who decided that our neighborhood needed two towers of vertical powderhill apartments? Who chose that? Our neighborhood never had anything over three stories either. But somehow, we got not one, but two towers forced in. Now, I emailed each of you the output of a traffic study that I ran. I set up an automated motion detection system and counted cars. And you have the output of that in your emails. Basically, what we have is very between two cars, a car every two minutes or a car every minute between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and midnight. It's only between midnight and 6:00 a.m. that the cars go below a car a minute. That's an average, and that's an average over the month of August, which does not include traffic to the schools. We have a grade school on 11th and on 13th, both. Nor does it include the traffic that one would get when people are all back in town, because of course, August is a great vacation month. So we're hoping that someone at the city council can do a traffic study because we're about to have a whole bunch of cars thrown up 12th Street, whether we like it or not. And none of us on 12th Street that had been citizens and taxpayers since the 1950s, none of us signed up for that. So we're a little concerned. Maybe you've forgotten who you actually represent. I'll read off the names. At number eight, 12th Street, is Claire Sinek. She's 84 years old. At number 10 is Ed Lyons, he's 77. At number 12 is Sarah LaCarre, she's 66. At number 13 is the Molestos, Paul's still alive, he's 95. Maryetta died when she heard that the building had been approved because they're right next door to this monstrosity of a building. Ann Carroll's the winner, she's 100 years old. She's at number 14. Number 15 is Stanley Bosick, he's 87. At number 16 is Terry Sapowski, she's 94. At number 18 is Richard Rotowski, he's 73. At number 19 is Marsha Stenbollich, she's 93. Charles DePoleano, he's a youngster of mine, she's only 58. James Care, 21, he's 72. Joanne and I were 65. The Margals, 74 and 73. Amonte is 73, across the street from me. Eric Peterson is 32, so he's really young. He's a young kid who just bought a house and made the upstairs into an apartment. Next-door neighbors to him, the Severicos, they're 63. And Walter Showstack is 92. So that's everybody halfway up 12th Street that's within the notice area of this building that got popped down. The average age is 76 years old. And we've all been sweeping our gutters and streets and not complaining about the fact that we don't have a street sweeper. And we certainly haven't let garbage from the garbage men that they drop, blow around. We've been cleaning our houses, and we've been paying our taxes. And what we have is a drag strip. And what we have is 120 more cars coming on one side of the street and 115 cars on the other side of the street. And nobody in the city council seems to give a darn about us. We're just left with these two buildings, and developers seem to be, do anything, you know, they're able to do anything they want. So the question is, I understand you want developers to build things, but what you actually have are speculators who can't build things and probably will end up selling their site to someone. They will turn into a spiral, downward spiral. Already, you've got smaller apartments, four apartments, smaller apartments, it'll sell to another developer. And slowly, the spiral of expectations will go down until you end up with who knows what. And it's because you didn't make sure that the people that you were approving for redevelopment plans had the money to go through the plan. And I don't know how many speculators you have, but this fellow went on record with the building and zoning last night saying that he doesn't have the money. He needs to attract investors, and this is why he needs to change the plan. And what the zoning board does is get out the rubber stamp and say yes unanimously, immediately, without any review, without any thought, without any consultation with the neighborhood. So we have the neighborhood down at Cascam, which I understand Mrs. Nadrowski, she lives there. And maybe that's why it's a low-density, low-rise neighborhood. But our neighborhood's no different. We're just as low-density, just as low-rise. Yes, we have some two-family houses, a few. But all of the people I named that live within the notice area of this thing live in one-family houses, except for Walter Showstack. He rents some apartments. So we're really at a loss. We were unable to really participate during the pandemic because most people, 70 and up, have a hard time with computers. I don't, because I work hard at it. But most of us don't even own computers. So we now are up against Christmas, and we found the same carpetbagger coming in trying to pull another package. And we're really looking for some help. We're looking for some regulation or some government control that stops these excesses, if you will. Now, what other solutions would there be? Well, no one did a traffic study that was worth a darn. The Pickle Works project on the south side of Broadway, they approved for a traffic study for a day or so, and the building and zoning department accepted it. And then the one on our side of Broadway, they used the same traffic study in the building zoning accepted it. So I would think the first thing you'd want to do would be a traffic study. Maybe put some of those rubber hoses across the street to count the cars. I sent you my data, but you may not trust my data. My data has a photograph of every car and the speed of that car because it was a little motion detection camera system that was doing this. So I can provide you with a little SQ-like database that has the photos and speeds and the timestamps on them. And you can take a look at that database if you'd like. But you can probably just run your own study if you can see it. What other solutions would be happening? 12th Street, not a through street, speed bumps? Maybe a traffic light mid-street? Right now, one thing you could do would be to desynchronize the 12th Street and Broadway light from the 12th Street and Avenue C light. So that way, people don't floor it so that they make the Avenue C light, because that's what they're doing right now. We've already taken one casualty because of this building. I really don't want to take anymore. I read you some names into the record of people. I don't think you want to see those people in the obituary. But the traffic is the biggest concern because we've already lost the issue of having some sunlight. We won't have much of that in the morning because of these overshadowing buildings, if they're built. Perhaps they won't be built, but I get the feeling that somebody at some point will build something very tall because this board and the zoning board allow it. And so that property can be developed by someone. And I'm sure someone will. But I don't see any thought to the neighborhood. However, down in Cascam, there seems to be all kinds of consideration in the neighborhood. And I don't know what the difference is between one neighborhood and another. I think our neighborhood needs some respect. And so do the citizens that have been paying taxes since the 1950s to live in houses they built mostly with their own hands back in the 1950s. Our houses stayed in our family since then. The other houses, Mrs. Stenbollich, for example, same exact story across the street. Most of the people that are in their 90s here moved to Bayonne and built here and stayed here and didn't make any fuss at all. Well, now's the time for you to give us an end because we don't know what to do about this. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher, I appreciate you representing your community here tonight, especially given the ages of that neighborhood. I've been there many times. I know you and I have spoken in the past. I also want to say you are certainly included among the individuals I was defending earlier, the civilians that are doing their part to make our community what it is and participating. I believe, and I think after tonight, I'll speak to the police department, traffic department, to see what unsynchronizing that light, what effect that might have. I think that's a great place to start.
Well, you can...
It is.
It doesn't cost anything to desynchronize one stoplight, obviously. That's zero cost to them. But the big thing is, I really think the at-large candidate aspect of the city council needs to change. I think everybody needs to represent a district. Having two out of five seats at large really makes it hard for someone to feel well-represented because even if everybody who represents a district votes in favor of something, you may not have the majority. And I really think you need to step back and take a look at at-large positions as being something that is no longer appropriate. And I don't know how you change your own structure, change your own constitution. But I dislike seeing at-large candidates. I think everybody should represent a piece of turf with some people that live there. Just a suggestion.
And I would just like to comment on the area on Avenue A, where you say... Just for the record, there was two developments, one that was on the planning board last night also. It got pulled, but there's 180 units development on 5th Street and Avenue A that's coming. So there is a lot of density. And there was 1,100 units approved in that area for AMP, which actually is closer to my house than Cascam. And I think part of the consideration, if I'm not mistaken from the city planner when they presented it there, on the density, the smaller density, which by the way, did not get approved for AMP. It was not passed tonight. That was part of the consideration because there was over 1,300 units coming online already on 5th Street and Avenue A. So there is a lot of density and tall buildings coming to that area also. I don't want you to think it isn't.
I'm sorry, we've got the record holder at 14 stories. So if anybody else is building a 14-story, I haven't heard of it.
They are, but we have 19 stories approved on Avenue E. But that's besides it. But I just wanted to clarify the record because you said there was no tall buildings in that area, but there are.
Council president, with your permission. I know that I didn't sign up.
Did he finish, Mr. Fisher? You could just be a public speaker.
That's fine.
Thank you.
I would like to, as you did, clarify the record. Michael Muselli, I'm the attorney for the Bayonne Equities B2 Urban Renewal LLC, the developer of the project. This client is not a speculator. This client has built a building in the city of Bayonne on 22nd Street. They are holding that building. So I want to correct the record on that. I know that Mr. Fisher throws that around. He doesn't really know. These guys are developers. They have built, and they're looking to hold long-term. They actually waited a little bit longer when they were leasing up their building to get the right kind of tenant, to get a good mix of tenants in the building. So they're not looking to just make cash. They're looking to build a nice product and to do something nice for this community. That property was a dilapidated car wash. Let's all remember that. And that that was what was up against these one- and two-family homes. The project is not a 14-story building. It is a 10-story building. It is, it has multiple levels of parking that are mezzanines in... We have mezzanine parking in the building. It doesn't add any height to the building. It allows parking, which we all want in this city, right? I mean, I live here, too, and I'm a citizen, too. I know how important parking is, and I generally try not to represent projects that don't understand that. There was a traffic study. There were traffic studies submitted on the original application and on this application. Those are licensed professionals. They are not going to sign something that's just a pro forma, as Mr. Fisher tries to put it. I know we might not agree with what we're doing, but that's what the council, this was done in public. There was a review here. There was a review at the planning board of that redevelopment plan. There were two reviews publicly noticed, one during the pandemic and one last night. The public didn't participate last night. There was one person who showed up. So I just want to clarify for the record. We are not a speculator. This client, every developer needs to put together money for a deal. Anybody who knows anything about development knows that developers cannot out-of-pocket come in, generally. There are some developers that are so well-heeled that they can sell finance. But generally, you have to put together a package for a bank to finance. So let's understand that as we move forward and as we decide what's in the best interest of the entire city and not just this person or that person. It's what's good for everyone. This city has seen a tremendous amount of growth over the past few years. Our property values are increasing, in part because of what you're doing. And I don't think anyone would ever complain about their home values going up. Let's just keep things in perspective, and let's be honest when we're talking to each other about these things. I will be honest, and my clients will be honest. And I know that the city council's been honest. And I would ask that we just all have that conversation honestly as we move forward, instead of trying to say, oh, it's 14 stories when it's really 10. Or, oh, they didn't submit a traffic report, we'll be dead. Or, oh, he's a speculator when he is actually not. So let's just keep the truth at the forefront of this whole conversation. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'd like to respond to that.
This is, actually, it's really not a back and forth. It's just public comment. You had your comment.
Well, then let me make another comment. The developer...
Quickly, then.
...that he needed to attract investors. If I'm going to be opposed by a professional attorney, I should at least get to state facts as facts. The fact is, the developer went on record and stated that he needed to have more apartments, more smaller apartments, in order to attract investors. That says to anyone that he does not yet have investors. Now, I don't know whether that makes him a speculator or not, but it makes him a man that doesn't have enough money to build a building.
Thank you.
Because that's obvious. Now, the fact that there is professional representation here to rebut Joe Random's citizen makes me wonder what else is going on. This building seems to have the wheels.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fisher. I understand. And Mr. Muselli, I'm going to ask you not to respond. We're not having a back and forth here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving forward. O9 is an ordinance for introduction and is amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 16, rent control. And it fixes Wednesday, January 19th, at 7:00 p.m. in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. This will extend rent control until December 31st, 2022.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
O10 is a bond ordinance providing for various roadway improvements buying in the city of Bayonne in the county of Hudson State in New Jersey, appropriating $2.5 million therefor, and authorizing the issuance of $1,697,557 in bonds or notes for the finance, to finance the costs thereof. And it fixes Wednesday, January 19th, as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. It's moved by Councilmember LaPalooza. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
O11 is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 7, traffic, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, January 19th, at 7:00 p.m. in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. This is for two note, turns on red This is for two no turns on red at 25th Street and Avenue A and 25th Street and Avenue E.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Oh 12 is an ordinance amending and supplementing to be revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 7, traffic, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, January 19th at 7:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. This will delete six restrictive parking places.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Communications is a resolution moved by the council as a whole ordering the following communications to be received and filed. It covers C1 through C8. Are there any questions on the communications?
No.
And on the communications, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Officers' report is a resolution moved by the council as a whole ordering the following officers' reports to be received and filed and any resolutions incorporated within to be adopted. It covers OR1 through OR5. Are there any questions on the officers' report?
Yes, I have OR1 on the claims report.
So let me pull that. And we'll take a vote on OR2 through OR5.
Could you have a hand raised online?
Do you want to take that one first, Sharon, before you do the poll?
Sure.
Okay.
You can unmute.
Okay, this is from Gail and John, unmute Gail. Gail, you can unmute it.
Gail, what is it on first?
Gail, you need to unmute yourself, which you can see. There we go.
Yes, on OR4, emergency snow removal, officers' report.
Okay, hold on one sec. Hold on one second. Do you have to remove that?
Yeah, I have to take that out.
All right, one second. We'll give you a second. We're going to remove that from the consent.
Okay.
So just hold on.
So on the remaining officers' reports, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Do you want to take-
If you don't mind going out of order, take our first.
Can I take Gail's question first?
Yes.
No problem. Okay.
On OR4, emergency snow removal, will that include this, this year's snow Kennedy Boulevard? Unlike all the other streets, the city did a phenomenal job removing snow last year with the heavy snow, but Kennedy Boulevard was like bogged down with snow because the county did nothing because they claimed they had no money.
Um, no, Kennedy Boulevard is not part of the bid for the city because it is not our road and not our responsibility. Therefore, we don't include that in our bid. It is solely the responsibility of the county, and I suggest you attend their freeholder meeting. Or their-
Isn't that sad?
Commissioner now.
Like everybody else.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, and you all know, we all complained about that last year, but it is not, it's not our responsibility. It's not our road. So it's not ours. So I really do advise you to, I think the commissioner's meeting is actually twice a month. I advise you to either contact Kenny Copaz or attend their meeting and address it there. Quite frankly, you know.
I will move that. Thank you very much.
And on OR4, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
On OR1, I have a question about the, the charges, the payment to controlled services for a total of 600, $263,931.75. I just want backup for it. It says for the 16th Street, 16th Street beach for $17,000 and Ida cleanup, which I think kind of explains itself, but some detail on what that included, how we got to, who we're paying, what the bids, what, how we got to all that. So before we pay it, I'd like to, I myself feel I need some backup onto exactly what was included. It's a, it's a lot to be, almost three, almost 600, $264,000 on how we awarded that, how we get, and what it included. So if we just, if we don't have that information, we want to pull that out to next month and approve everything else. I'm okay with everything else I reviewed on there.
We do have another hand raised online.
Well, Director, do you want to comment on this issue over?
Can you provide the documentation on all this?
It's probably finance. I would have documented all of this. I don't have documentation of these, but it was broken down into-
Can you step up, step up to the microphone? I guess.
Thomas Carter, 135 West Fourth Street, Public Works Director for the city of Bayonne. Let me start off, I want to apologize for getting a little out of line before, and thank you for reeling me back in, but-
Your councilman stuff hasn't left you.
Yeah, I get wound up at times. I can't help it. For the Ida cleanup, what we were charged for were the dumpsters that were put out on the street and all the tipping fees and the use of the machinery. It's all been broken down. It's itemized. It will even show you the different, because we had to use different landfills because some were closed at certain times and we weren't able to get rid of the stuff. I want to say when FEMA came in, they were very impressed with the way it was cleaned up and that, you know, most of our neighborhoods were cleaned up before they, you know, finished their inspection of town. So that was one good thing that we had managed to do was get those dumpsters out there and get the people to get their stuff out and so it didn't lay in their houses and, you know, become mold issues. But we do have all documentation that's there. For the beach, if you asked about the beach also, it just-
Yeah, that's what it says on there.
Yeah, that was for the kayak launch. We had put that out to bid.
So there was a bid for this? Because I don't remember accepting bids.
No, 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 no. With, with the original contractor who did that. There was an add-on for doing the, I'm not an add-on, a deletion item for doing the beach. The price for them to do the beach was around $90,000. We were able to get it done by using the local contractor and we got some donation for the sand and one of our workers-
I believe all the sand was donated.
For $17,000. Yes, that's what I said.
So I don't know what the seven, I know all the sand was donated.
So 17,000 was just for the rental of the machine and the construction of the thing, so.
But did we bid that? It's $17,000. Did we do good government and bid it? Isn't it required to be bid?
No. Yes. So it was a substantial savings for the city and it was probably-
Well, we don't know that. We didn't bid it, so we don't know what other people would have come in.
No, it was bid as-
We bid one bid. You build a whole project and then you took that out separately.
Yeah, but-
It's not unlike the Holy Family when we changed the bid specs because it was a different job. We had to go out and rebid it because it's a different job, right?
It's a different job.
It's a different job.
Yes.
So I'm just saying, you know, best practices-
The other bidders that bid that all would have put that in with their bid.
Transparency and good government says it probably should have been bid.
Yes. So.
So it's just understanding why, what, you know, what the charges were. So that was not for the sand. It was just for labor of moving the sand and the machine to move the sand.
And put all the rocks and build the jetty and put down the MAFI and all the, actually built up a little bit behind the-
Okay, so can you, you just send that documentation?
Yeah, we have that.
Okay.
All right. It's beautiful, by the way. Anybody that hasn't been down there yet?
It's, and hopefully people, I mean, I'll talk it out.
Doing a heck of a job.
I think there's someone else with a hand raised?
Yeah, it was a hand raised online.
Okay, unmute, you get the break though.
Good evening, City Council, Thea Frango, 109 West 53rd Street, the great city of Bayonne. So the, the cost for the beach was ultimately $90,000. Is that correct?
Seventeen, seventeen and change.
Um, this was, I don't know, so I'm going to just tell you, it was $17,000 to control demolition for the beach, and I heard from Mr. Carter that was just a part of it. There was other part that was done by somebody else because you only bid out, you only rebid a piece of it, is what you just said.
Okay.
So we rejected a bid? I'm just trying to understand the process then, if Tommy's saying we didn't reject the bid. We took a bid in.
It was a, it's a deletion item, so we can award it or we cannot, so we deleted it. For them to have done it, it would have cost us close to $90,000.
So we normally reject the bid.
I don't remember the exact number. I could get you that if you need it, but I know it was in that vicinity of $90,000. We chose not to use that contractor and do that item.
And not to rebid.
And not to rebid it. We put it out, we got it.
And just hand select.
We got donations for the sand and we got the machinery done. So we built that whole beach for 17 and change rather than the 90. I think that's better than rebidding. If I'm wrong, then I'm wrong. I don't know what else to do. That's a job I'm hired to do, try to save money, so.
I, Council, I totally respect the director of the DPW. So 17,000 went to control demo, and I guess, you know, I mean, from, from pictures that I've seen when this was created, you know, I've, I've seen trucks of, you know, Bilowski, who was, you know, in charge of the garbage company, and I've seen a lot of DPW workers down there when this thing was created, you know, to remove the rocks, the jet, you know, straightening out the jetty, create this beautiful, as Mr. Carroll said, you know, beautiful setting, and he looked so great, cut in the ribbon. But the problem I have with this was the Army Corps of Engineers ever consulted on this project? You know, my father knows these waterways like I know the streets of Bayonne. He could tell you the depths, and it puzzles me sometimes when he gets sent out by the statute of liberty, and he'll say we're at 40 feet and the fish finder says 39 feet. And he knows these waters so well. And when I explained to him what was going on, he said, this is crazy. How was the Army Corps not involved in this? And I believe, you know, on, on some level of the state, that they probably should have been, you know, involved in this process. I understand we're trying to save money in this city, and I, you know, I totally respect Mr. Carter and appreciate Mr. Carter trying to save every nickel. That's important to the taxpayers and people should be proud of that. But when it comes to our waterway and stuff and creating this, within a couple of weeks, this beautiful beach was actually washed away. It was completely washed away. So all of this work and all of this effort, and to my understanding now, they're asking, you're asking for more money, you know, ultimately to-
No.
You know, fix the situation.
That's not what we're doing here right now, Peter. We're just paying an old bill. We're not at, there's no ask for money. I was just asking for documentation on what was done for this money and how it came about.
But it's, it's ultimately going to require more money because the way the beach is sitting right now, you know, we had, you know, obviously Hurricane Ida that came through and stuff like that, but it's not uncommon for our areas, you know, to face these kind of things. And we see a lot of the beach, you know, the sand ultimately pushed out in the jetties. And I think it's important when it comes to, you know, look, let's look to the professionals sometimes on this. The Army Corps of Engineers are out there dredging. They're out there ensuring that the waterways are safe as our DPW workers are working on our streets. Those folks, you know, in saving bucks, we need to be experts in involving these things. And it was a great beach when it opened, and it's not so great right now, you know. And all for the kayak launch, it's a wonderful program from Alicia and Jackie McNulty and everybody else involved in that, but we're going to do it right, you know?
Thank you.
So on OR1, Mr. Carroll.
Are we, did you ask to poll or are we voting on this?
You're voting.
No, you get to vote on it.
So we're voting?
Yeah.
All right.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Oh, he stepped, oh, he's, oh. We're voting on the claims list.
Voting on OR1, the claims list.
Then, did you take the one?
Well, we got an explanation. Tommy provided, he's going to send the backup, but he provided a verbal-
Okay. Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. Ms., oh wow, I'm going backwards. Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Pass my bedtime now. And consent resolutions is a resolution order, moved by the council as a whole ordering the following resolutions to be adopted. It covers CR1 through CR11. Are there any questions on the consent resolutions?
No. Any hands raised?
Negative.
Okay, on the consent resolutions, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski. R1 is authorizing the mayor and the chief of police to accept and expend $1.5 million in funds allocated to the Bayonne Police Department under the fiscal year 2021 COPS Hiring Program Grant Award Number 15J COPS-21-GG-03469-UHPX from the U.S. District of Department of Justice and Community Oriented Policing for the hiring of 12 new police officers. Move it. And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palu-
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
I would pleasure.
Ms. Nadrowski. R2 and 3 have been withdrawn. R4 is approving the budgetary transfer in the calendar year 2021 budget, and it has to be read in full. Is resolved that the budgetary transfers as set forth below pertaining to the calendar year 2021 appropriations being the same are hereby authorized and be it further resolved that the controller be and is hereby authorized and directed to make the said transfers in accordance herewith. From primary and general elections, other expenses $25,000, law salary and wages $100,000, employee group insurance $1,900, $1,900,000, fire union salary and wages $850,000, other public work salary and wages $100,000, health other expenses $400,000, parking and playgrounds salary and wages $270,000, gas and electric $98,000, municipal court salary and wages $100,000, two business administration salary and wages $22,500, primary and general election salary and wages $25,000, engineering services other expenses $350,000, police uniform salary and wages $2,700,000, $2,700,000, police uniform other expenses $16,000, fire non-uniform salary and wages $1,500, fire other expenses $45,000, municipal prosecutors other expenses $5,000, building and ground other expenses $7,000, vehicle maintenance salary and wages $46,000, vehicle maintenance other expenses $50,000, park maintenance salary and wages $5,000, park maintenance other expenses $5,000, reserve for accumulated absences $440,000, gasoline $120,000, office services $5,000. And from the parking utilities, social security $8,000, to parking utility other expenses $8,000.
Someone?
On that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
R5 is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Hoplight Communications LLC for telecommunication consultant services related to the 5G model and no cost to the city for a period of one year commencing January 1st, 2022 through December 31st. And it's payable from the escrow account established by the telecommunications providers pursuant to the city of Bayonne's ordinance 0-20-61. And it's reappointing Peter Lupo as the city's telecommunications consultant for the period of one year. Move it. And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski. R6 is moved by Councilmember Perez, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with CME Associate for Professional Engineering Services as in-house engineer in connection with developers and redevelopers for the period of one year commencing January 1st for an amount not to exceed $75,000. Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
R7 is authorizing agreement with Matrix New World Engineering for Professional Engineering R7 is authorizing agreement with Matrix New World Engineering for professional engineering services as special projects engineer on behalf of the city for a period of one year commencing January 1st for an amount not to exceed $400,000.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R8 is authorizing agreement with Matrix New World Engineering for professional engineering services as special projects engineer in connection with developers and redevelopers for a period of one year commencing January 1st for an amount not to exceed $300,000.
Move it.
Second by Mr. Perez. And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R9 is an agreement with Arthur R. Theobald Jr., Esquire from Appalazee, McDermott, Mastro, and Murphy to act as special labor attorney for professional legal services in connection with the negotiation of labor agreement for a period of one year commencing January 1st for an amount not to exceed $40,000.
Move.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R10 has been withdrawn. R11 authorizes the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Integrated Microsystems Inc. for information technology services for a period of one year commencing January 1st for an amount not to exceed $60,320.
Move.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R12 is another agreement with Integrated Microsystems Inc. for the procurement of information technology equipment, computer systems, and network administration and subscription renewals and the purchases for the period of one year, January 1st, for an amount not to exceed $55,000.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R13 is authorizing agreement with Timothy J. Moriarty, Esquire, for professional legal services as a municipal court prosecutor and Stephen R. Hummel as the alternate municipal court prosecutor for an amount not to exceed $23,700, $700 for the court, municipal court sessions and in the event of appeals requiring superior court appearance, an additional $1,000 per appeal for a total combined amount not to exceed $88,400.
We have a hand raised online.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Well, second, and then we can have the person talk or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
You have to let him talk.
You can unmute them or who is it?
This is Gail. I have unmuted. So, there we go.
Yes, I have a question. We have very capable prosecutors and alternate prosecutors already on the salaries for the City of Bayonne. Why are we hiring more prosecutors for the city? Is the crime going up that much?
No, Gail, we always had these, these two prosecutors, we always hire outside persons. So, Tim and Stephen have been our prosecutors for the last couple of years.
Okay, but why do we need outside prosecutors? I don't understand that when we have capable people in the city to do this.
I don't.
In the past, in the 90s and early 2000s, the Law Department allocated one of our assistant city attorneys that most of the time it was, it was Cheryl Cashman in the early 90s, it was me in the mid to late 90s when Cheryl became a judge, and Susan Ferraro and Donna Russo for the most part, and sometimes Carla Garcia. They'll fill in at this point, but I believe in 2009 or, I'm thinking it was 2009 or 10, they went back to outside prosecutors. And there's some good reason for that now because of conflicts of interest that come into play and now that the prosecutors, because of the state of New Jersey's rules, operate independently of the municipal court and have to provide their own discovery. So, there's some legal rules that we have to observe that are imposed upon us by the state of New Jersey, the Supreme Court of the state of New Jersey. So, we've had outside counsel, I know at least as full-time prosecutors since, I believe it's 2009, Susan and, I can't, there was a, both prosecutors came from Jersey City in 2009, 2010 maybe, and we kept, we kept this construct all throughout this administration also. And when they're, when they're not able to prosecute, we do go up there and fill in the blanks.
So, basically, it's because of possibility of conflict of interest?
No, it's more than that. It's the allocation of resources. Because of COVID, I think the number that they're at now for backlog of cases is in excess of 35,000 cases.
Wow.
Yeah, and that's just not here. That's everywhere across the state of New Jersey, Gail, because they've had to go, they didn't have court for several months and then they went to remote court sessions. And essentially, if you get notified, you have to show up in court and you don't show up, in the old days you had a warrant issued. Now, you have another notice and another notice and another notice. And, you know, until they get back into the courtroom, it's going to be difficult to adjudicate these matters. But, you know, there's 35,000 plus matters that prior, that built up, not including the current calendar.
Okay, and while I have you, I have a question for the next-
Wait, wait, let us finish the vote on this before you go on to another one. We have an open vote.
Okay. And on R13, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Okay, my question, my question for the next resolution is the alternates that are in the city of attorneys and employees, do they get a stipend or do they get extra money for that?
No.
Is that part of their job description?
We don't pay an extra stipend for that. That's just, we're covering when the prosecutors go on vacation or they have a conflict, we go up and cover it.
Okay, so you do get a stipend?
No, the answer was N-O. No, we do not get a stipend.
Okay, all right, perfect. Thank you so much for the explanation. I appreciate it. Have a good night, not the holidays.
You too.
Okay. R14 is appointing Timothy J. Moriarty, Esquire, and Stephen R. Hummel, Esquire, as chief municipal prosecutor and alternate municipal prosecutor respectively, and assistant city attorneys Donna Russo, Esquire, Carla Garcia, Esquire, Jessica H. Connors, Esquire, and law director John Coffey, Esquire, as alternate municipal prosecutors for the City of Bayonne for a period of one year.
Move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R15 authorizes agreement with Criveter and Criveter for professional legal services in connection with federal and state grants and funding, and funding for a period of one year commencing January 1st for an amount not to exceed $120,000.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R16 authorizes an agreement with McCabe Environmental Services for professional services as certified lead-based paint inspector and risk assessor for a period of one year commencing January 1st for an amount not to exceed $20,000.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R17 authorizes the agreement with Civil Solutions for professional engineering services in connection with the maintenance of the City of Bayonne's digital tax map for a period of one year for an amount not to exceed $24,500.
Move.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R18 is an agreement with Howard S. Levine for professional medical services as a non-uniform, for non-uniform employees for a period of one year commencing January 1st for an amount not to exceed $15,000.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R19 is an agreement with John T. De Duses for professional medical services for uniform employees for a period of one year commencing January 1st for an amount not to exceed $52,000.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R20 is an agreement with North Star Health Systems Employee Assistant Program for professional medical, mental health services to provide employees assisted mental health services for a period of one year commencing January 1st for an amount not to exceed $30,000.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R21 is an agreement with the Bayonne Community Mental Health Center, a service of Trinitas Regional Medical Center for mental health services for low and moderate income and public assistant clients from Bayonne for a period of one year commencing January 1st for an amount not to exceed $92,000.
Move.
Second.
And on that one, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Is an agreement with Donahue, Geronda, Doria, and Tompkins for professional accounting services to act as municipal auditor for the city for a period of one year commencing January 1st for an amount not to exceed $92,000.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R22 is an agreement with Stack Coolahan and Stack LLC for professional legal services to act as tax attorney in connection with the state court tax appeals for a period of one year for an amount not to exceed $90,000.
Move it.
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R24 is appointing Rion Coghlin Mitchellino LLC as qualified panel counsel for a period of one year commencing January 1st.
Move.
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R25 has been withdrawn. R26 authorizes the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Alphardog Solutions Inc. for website design, management, and maintenance for a period of one year commencing January 1st for a period not to exceed $54,000.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R27 is awarding the contract for rodent and pest control to Bayonne Exterminating Company for a period of one year for a contract amount of $24,900.
Some move.
And a second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R28 is a resolution entering, into an agreement with the Bayonne Board of Education for an after-hour academic support for low and moderate income households in response to the learning lag created as an effect of the COVID-19 pandemic, and it's in an amount not to exceed $475,000.
Move it.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R29 is an agreement with Anthony R. Suarez for professional legal services to act as the rent control board attorney for a period of one year for an amount not to exceed $15,000.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R30 is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an indemnity and trust agreement for a period commencing December 31st, 2021 through December 31st, 2024, and such other documents as are or become necessary for the city to continue participation as a member of the New Jersey Jets.
Move. Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R31 is a resolution authorizing a $350,000 emergency appropriation pursuant to NJSA 40A colon 4-48 to fund necessary improvements in the city as a result of the tropical storm Ida damage response and recovery.
I have questions on this. What are the improvements for 300, what improvements? I don't, there's no documentation on this at all.
It was whatever cost, what was associated with Tropical Storm Ida, the dumpsters they prepared, the cleanup-
We just paid the dumpsters, though.
Excuse me?
And we paid the dumpsters and-
Right, but we didn't, that's why it's an emergency. There was no appropriation for this. This was appropriate-
And who were we paying with this? So, what were the impro, it says improvements, that's why-
That's just the language of the statute.
Okay, so who were we paying?
There's a whole list. It's, and we're all, everything's being reimbursed from FEMA, but we need an appropriation in order to pay for it, and then we submit it and we get reimbursed.
I understand that, but I like to-
So, when there's an emergency, we didn't have this appropriated in the regular budget, right?
I understand that.
So, I have to find the money somewhere and a legal line. So, this creates the appropriation to pay for it, then it gets submitted to FEMA and we get reimbursed.
I know, but I'm just asking who we're paying and what we're paying for.
The whole, this will, we'll get the package. I have a whole package.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, there's no, that's mysteriously missing from the-
No, everything was paid already.
No, but I mean, we don't, but we don't know that. We're approving it.
Yeah, things were on the claims list. They were just individual. There was, there's some, it's for overtime, for public works, workers, for cleanup, it's salary and wages.
And it's all coming out of FEMA money?
Yes. Well, we have to appropriate it. We're setting up this emergency. It's an account, separate account. Everything is charged to that account, and then once we receive the money back from FEMA, it's cleared. That's why this has to be totally separate. It's outside the cap.
No, I understand how appropriations work. I'm just asking, you know, what it was being appropriated for. It doesn't say that.
Anything that was spent for response and recovery of Tropical Storm Ida.
Okay.
We have a hand raised online.
Go ahead.
I'm looking at Peter Franco.
Good evening, City Council, Peter Franco, 109 West 53rd Street in the great City of Bayonne. Ms. Mauer, I don't get to speak to you too much. Do you, do you sign off on this with the business administrator or is it just you? Is it a function of that or does it require a BA?
No, I have to sign a certification. The CFO has to sign a certification, not the BA.
Okay, great. Would you agree with me, though? You know, the council president says, and I would assume that the rest of the council don't have documents, you know, as to everybody that's being paid out of this $350,000, wouldn't it be nice to have some transparency to know what companies are being paid?
Everything was already paid and approved by council. So, the council already approved what was ever paid. I mean, I'll get the packages, the whole package that was put together by Public Works, Police, Fire, of everything. They recorded all their hours. It's basic, it's mostly cleanup, this very minimal salary. It's mostly cleanup.
Donna, so this sets up for the future, right?
No, for the past.
No, it's paying what happened in the past.
Correct. Correct.
But you're creating a line item.
Correct, for the future.
That will be a permanent thing for next budget.
Correct. It will be raised in next year's budget.
That's what I mean about...
Right, correct. Because, correct. It'll be raised in next year's budget as a deferred charge. By the time we adopt the budget, we should have the money in by FEMA, and it'll be wiped out.
Okay.
It's a way of, an accounting of it, a recording of it.
Yeah, so we got the appropriation side...
Seven appropriations set up for everything you spent.
Yeah, I wanted to know the other side of it, of what we're paying. That was all.
So, so we know ultimately who we're paying for what happened in the past, right? So we're appropriating $350,000 for emergency, you know, stuff related to Tropical Storm Mrs. Mauer, could one of those, you know, individuals be Mr. Bilowski, garbage company?
I don't believe so. I don't know. I could pull the pack, and we could pull everything, and I'll give it to the council.
Ms. Mauer, you're the CFO of the city.
Right.
If I didn't have an answer, I'd be embarrassed.
If I don't have an answer of every single invoice that was paid?
Council president, does the public get to just address people directly? Shouldn't it be going through you?
It's an ordinance, yeah, sure. You could come through the chair, but...
It should go through the chair.
Absolutely.
You know, to have some decorum and work, you know, organization in the meeting.
I think they still haven't addressed you directly.
I get it, but, but we need to really have a little more organization in the meetings.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's asked it to me, and I'll ask her.
Council president, could you please address the CFO since, you know, she ultimately appropriated these funds for past, you know, what has happened in the past? I'm asking, is Mr. Bilowski, the owner of the garbage company that was approved through city council, is he one of the individuals that is being paid out through this $350,000 contract?
Ms. Mauer, can...
Control services.
Control services, the $264,000 that you questioned?
Part of that.
That's what it was for, for all the cleanups and the dumpsters.
So that's part of this?
Yep.
Okay. Thank...
That was my question. Thank you so much. I apologize for the confusion.
Who would like, who would like to move it?
Move it.
In a second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
R-32 is a resolution consenting to and authorizing the assignment and assumption of the financial agreement between the city of Bayonne and 190 West 54th Street Urban Renewal Associates LLC to Citgen Realty Urban Renewal LLC.
Move it.
Second.
So a question on this. Why is this...
We have a hand raised again.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Peter Franco again.
Council president, Peter Franco, 109 West 53rd Street, can you ask the CFO if she can explain the financial agreement behind this?
We pulled that, Westmont, we pulled that. What's, what's financial, R-32?
R-32.
This is just a trade...
Oh, yeah.
We were talking about, R-32 is 190, that's the first Phase 1, the one that's already built?
So what is the question, Peter? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the council president, the question is, what are the financials behind this agreement?
This is...
Whether or not it's a transfer, you know, I ultimately want to know that.
This financial agreement and redevelopment agreement, this project was approved many years ago. It's the Woodmont Phase 1 that's up on 54th Street, and they're transferring their ownership in the property, which is their right under the documents that were signed years ago. Most of our financial agreements and redevelopment agreements allow for a transfer, and they're transferring their interest to Citgen Realty Urban Renewal LLC, another urban renewal LLC, to take over the ownership and management of the project.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Mauer.
I try.
Did that answer your question?
You can even see her lips move, did you?
Can I try that? Okay, here we go. Starting, Add 1 is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a second agreement, two-agreement CY20-080 with Bayonne Youth Center for CDVG COVID funds for the virtual after-school learning center and community outreach services, increasing the same in the amount of $14,000, making the total contract $34,000.
Move it.
Second.
And on Add 1, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Guess what? We didn't take a vote on R-32.
Well, we got so confused with Ms. Mauer.
Let's finish Add 1 first.
We'll finish Add 1, we'll go back. It's way past my...
Aye.
Guys. Mr. Carroll.
Aye, again.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
I just have a question. Is this coming out of the ARPA money, or no? This, no? Oh, because it says, yeah, I know, but we sometimes pass it through CDVG for, okay, just curious. Okay.
R-32.
Thank you. Aye.
Okay. R-32, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Add 2 is authorizing the mayor and city council to allow for an exemption from ordinance 3-1.8 of the revised general ordinances to LEG, allowing work hours between 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM, Monday through Sunday, for a week period commencing December 8, 2021 through September 30 of 2022, until, or until the completion of the work activities.
So a question on this. So I realize we want this to go through, and if they need a little extra time, I get it, but I don't like the fact that this is going to go 12 hours, 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM extra. So I would say if you were going to make this 6:00 PM to maybe 10:00 PM, or something like that...
This, this is for concrete pours, which they require that much, and it does, it's not happening every day, and they will notify the city two weeks ahead of the time. And it is, I agree with you, like, I complained 100 times about our own project over here at Fitzpatrick going on all hours. But this is also down Lincoln Equities where UPS is, and there really is no residential area nearby.
So there is some, but I'll agree with you in some aspects.
But they will...
But the last provision, where the city reserves the right to declare this resolution null and void without further action, if any justified complaints are lodged with the Bayonne Police Department, Law Division, or other department in the city of Bayonne, that would justify this for me. So if there is going to be a lot of noise and we get complaints...
Yeah, we can revoke it.
Then we can revoke it. All right? So I'll agree to that, because it's mostly concrete pours, which, again, looking at this, it doesn't, it says it in one of the things, but it doesn't say that that's the only thing. As long as there's a provision, I'm happy with this, okay? So I'll go along.
No, I know you dealt with that on the residential building, the concrete place.
And who would like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Given that provision, aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Add 3 is approving the submission of a grant application and the execution of a grant contract with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the Peninsula Bayonne Harbor Port Access Road Project.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Add 4 is awarding the sale by the city of Bayonne in the county of Hudson of its property tax levy for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2021, and ratifying and confirming the authority to certain actions in connection therewith.
So is this just to assign it to somebody, like, through a bid process? Or is this a specific company?
It's awarding it.
It's awarding it to...
It's in there, I think, um, or...
It wasn't a bid.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're awarding it.
I know, but who's the awardee?
Right, we're awarding it now, it was a bid. I think we had three or four bidders.
What is the name of the awardee?
I don't know how that...
Okay, it's Tri Stone Capital Assets LLC.
I don't see that in the...
It's in Section 1 of the...
We don't have it. Do you have it? Oh.
Yeah, I have it. It's at 4.
Yeah.
I didn't see it at 4.
Page 2.
At 5?
Oh, yeah, I have it. Hold on.
Tri Stone Capital Assets?
Yeah.
Is that, oh.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and I'll move it.
Who would like to second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Add 5 is rejecting the bids received for the Francis G. Fitzpatrick Park Bell and Clock Tower improvement.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Yeah, again, I just want to reemphasize that this is the problem with getting things last second, when it's very difficult to make decisions when you don't have this stuff in advance. So, anyway, I'll vote aye on this, but I don't like the fact that these last-second things come in right before the meeting.
Preaching to the choir.
Well, it'd be nice for you to say it on the public record, then.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
And Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Add 6 is awarding the contract to Firefighters 1 LLC, the sole bidder, for PPE turnout gear extractor and Ram Air Gear Dryers for a contract amount of $65,158,96.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Add 7 is authorizing amendment to the contract with Bespoke Health LLC to increase the amount by an additional $3,500,000, bringing the total contract amount to $7 million.
I have a question, I have a number of issues with this. First off, I think it violates the local public contract law. We didn't send this out to bid. We're not allowed just to hand out contracts without going out to a bid process. You know the local public contract laws, Jay.
I do. Bespoke was entered into in connection with the response to the pandemic.
Understood.
And my understanding at the time was that the governor's, one of his 220-something edicts allowed for contracts like this to be entered into without need for the public bid.
I agree at the time when it was emergency, but this is, we knew this, and we knew it was coming up at the end of the year. It should have been bid three months ago with whoever is responsible for watching this and understanding that. I'm not, I know we need vaccines, I'm not opposed to it. It's just extremely pricey, when we know that, I think, the emergency of this is, is over, in a way that everyone, I talked to pharmacies today in Bayonne, and they do this. One in particular, when I talked to a pharmacist today, he does $1,000 himself for $40 a shot. This is costing us about $300 a shot. Not saying we shouldn't do it, but I really think that we need to have good government. We need to follow the public contract laws. I understood last time it was an emergency, but we had eight months to bid this out for now. Why is it an emergency still? Why didn't we not follow the protocol?
The public health emergency in some aspects is still active through January 11, 2022.
Yes, through January 11, and that's in a couple of weeks. Again, I don't, I think maybe we should, in following with the law, because I don't, we are not following the law, you just can't do all our contracts. And we don't know nothing about this company. We, has anyone even done, do we get any feedback? Are people happy with them? I don't know. You can say what you say, but I don't know if anyone up here has gotten any feedback on the job they're doing. I would like to actually encourage people to support our local, did we bid this out? Maybe one of our local vendors, small businesses that we're trying to help, provide this. Some of our, our local pharmacies actually will do home visits to do vaccinations. But I'm not saying we shouldn't do this. I'm thinking maybe we can just do a one-month extension and do the proper process to see what other, what we get and what the price is and, you know, and also, right now, I know there's an uptick. I know it was slow because we got three months' worth of numbers. Is this just for the winter? I mean, we don't pay these people per shot. We pay them to sit there whether anyone comes or not. So right now, because the number of shots they're giving out is low, they're giving out about $1,000 a month, that's about $300 a shot in an arm. Pharmacy does it for $40, and it doesn't cost anybody anything. But I'm just saying, I just think in the, in, with good government, good transparency, ineffective government says we should bid the contract out and, and do a vetting of the bidders that come in.
What, what is the dates for the...
This is a year long.
This contract was awarded for a year contract, so the contract doesn't end until April 2022. Right, so we're not extending the contract, we're just increasing it. Because we're kind of like a month-to-month, we didn't know what it was going to cost, and every month we pay it, it gets submitted to FEMA and we get the money back.
Okay, but FEMA's no longer covering this from what I understand.
They are.
But additionally, it still doesn't matter, it still goes with, with the public contract law. This is an amendment of more than 20%, which is not allowed. You can't amend a contract by more than 20%.
This is like the Third Amendment, right.
But this itself is a 350, 3 million, 500...
It was awarded under the emergency, it was allowed under the emergency.
I understand the emergency, but we had, my point is, the emergency, we known for months this was coming to an end. We should have went through the process. We approved it last year, no problem.
It hasn't come to an end yet. The contract is ongoing, so I don't...
So then why do we have to do this?
That's why it's coming to council, because it's over the 20%. 20, that's the reason it's coming to council.
And it doesn't end until April, you're saying?
I don't know, we don't have, we don't...
If it wasn't over 20%, it wouldn't have to go to council.
Those days would just provide it.
We could just increase it. That's the reason it's going to council, we're not extending the contract. The council awarded the contract for one year.
So, so would we be able to put it out and see if we can get a lower bidder? Because we have until April, you're saying?
For April.
For April.
Yeah, I...
So I think that would be the prudent thing to do, is put it out, see if you get a lower bid. If not, then we know what's on the table.
Wait, no, I think you're talking across each other. We have a contract that goes to April at X amount, and what Donna's saying is we need to increase that amount because we have, it's obvious that they're going to go over what they've expected, what we had originally contracted for. When that contract comes up in April, I think you, prior to that, it would behoove the council to figure out whether we want to re-enter into this contract, if it is, if there's enough places that are offering the services. I know I got mine today over there, they were doing a nice business today, but I think the numbers we had for last month were 962, or...
The month before that was like 700.
The month before was like 7 and change, yeah.
So, on average, it was being very...
But this is the time it's going to increase, this time?
Yes. But again, you know?
Right.
We want to support local businesses, our pharmacies are more than capable of handling it. They've expressed...
So I'm not against putting this out to see if we can get a bid?
For April.
Yeah, for April, moving forward, but, but I think we should...
So are we obligated to keep this?
It should be a year-long contract, that's what I...
Because my, my point is, so, we could, all of our contracts are always written with it, right now.
The bespoke contract does have a termination provision in it. Off the top of my head, I don't remember what it is, but...
I mean, just prudence, I know it's, I know we were saying it's FEMA money, but just because it's FEMA money, should we be paying $500 a shot when we're down to, you know,[1584.82] know, I don't know, 500 shots a month? I mean, should we, is that a good spend of FEMA money? $500 a shot? I mean, you know.
I'd like the healthcare system in the country to be different as well and the cost of vaccines to be dramatically changed. Nationally, they just capped the insulin payments at $35, but at this moment, this is the price of what's available to us. I don't think it's prudent or good government at this time to disrupt a safety issue. And it was mentioned earlier about not voting against safety, and I believe this falls under those guidelines as well. The people are being, lives are being saved. And as far as shopping small and going to our local pharmacies, I support them all. But we're entering into a cold season that what happens now if through this disruption, you get lines out the door and people can't get served. I think this absolutely needs to go through. I move it.
I'm, I'm not against having a service. Again, what I would like to do is see if there is something considerably less. And if it's not, I have not heard bad feedback on this company at all.
I haven't heard any.
So.
Bad feedback at all.
I don't, I don't see what the problem would be to give this an extra month, give it a, a bid date, and let's see what we do get.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm just saying, you know, we should follow the, the
Well, the other option is you don't, the city doesn't have to offer it. I mean, there are ample opportunities for people to get, like as council president says, they can go to a CVS, a Walgreens, any of the local places that, that offer this.
I think the city should offer it, but I think we should try and get the best, the best price we could get.
Follow, we, we should also follow our own laws and, and abide by them.
Well, this, this contract is for a full year. And it had, I forget the initial amount when we first set it. Then we did increase it because of the volume of, of injections that were provided, vaccinations that were provided. And I actually think the additional 3.5 million, Donna, is just so we don't have to come back again. You could end up spending $100,000 of this.
Up two, right.
Yeah. So again, while the total contract amount would now be up to $7 million, it could be you're only going to spend $3,551.
Well, it's a fixed cost because we pay them for the days they're there. We know what the cost is every day that they're there.
Yes, but if you're talking about terminating the contract, you would reduce that.
Okay.
And so there's.
I think there was.
There's.
Carol moved it. Who would like to say?
No, I think there was.
Oh, there's a comment on the.
There, there are hands online. I'm ready to unmute Peter Franco again.
Good evening, City Council, once again, Peter Franco, 109 West 33rd Street, great city of Bayonne. My initial, my initial question for this resolution was, has the city conducted a cost analysis? And I'm really glad to see the council president is doing the due diligence with this for small businesses, small pharmacies in town versus, you know, what we're paying this company at the ice rink. I don't like the idea that this was an add-on. You know, like Mrs. Mauer said, you know, this contract is going on until April 2022. So this should be upfront so that the stakeholders of the city could review this and place comments in favor or not. And by the way, the agenda wasn't even posted until this morning for this meeting. So not only did residents not have an opportunity to, you know, join in for this commentary on this resolution, but the entire agenda wasn't available until this morning. You guys have a caucus a week before. You know what you're voting on. I get it. We're in the middle of a pandemic and stuff like that, but there's an obligation to get this information out to the people. And it just looks shady.
Excuse me?
Shady, he said.
Shady.
Not the other word.
Shady.
Well, that still implies a lot.
Oh, I, I, I thought she believed, stayed with cursing. I'm sorry. I agree with your outrage.
Go ahead.
I certainly wouldn't curse the city council.
Not allowed.
Yeah.
Oh, listen, you know, I know some people whisper, but that's all right. Look, we're decreasing this contract, we're increasing this contract ultimately for this company. I believe the cost was originally 3.5 million. We're basically doubling that. And Mr. Coffey explained that, you know, maybe it doesn't hit 7 million. But again, do we have a number of Bayonne residents that this company, Bespoke Health LLC, has vaccinated, like in full? Do we know, you know, as far as, you know, do they have the first shot? Do they have the second shot? Or do they have a booster?
Yes.
You know, we had a lot of people talk tonight where money can be allocated in different areas, whether it was the PAL or, you know, for 501(c)(3)'s, you know, with food insecurity issues. You know, I think that money can be better spent in other areas. And if we can find ways that like, look, this is just, you know, this is maybe too much money that we're pushing out of FEMA money. And maybe we could draw it, you know, to a different area and maybe allocate a part of the budget to address other needs. I think that's more fiscally responsible than kind of just saying, oh, let's, let's just wing it. So it's, it's, it's pretty frustrating, you know, in fact, again, that this resolution ultimately, you know, went down as an add-on when it's ultimately the second-to-last item on the agenda. And most people are in their beds at this point or dealing with their kids or dealing with their family. It's not fair to the folks of Bayonne that don't have the ability to chime in and they're stakeholders. Thanks so much.
I just want to clarify that. I was not saying we don't need vaccines. I am saying we do. I was just asking about, first of all, the process and, and the following the procedure and, and if we could do something a better, something better, more fiscally responsible.
So can we write a resolution to go out for bid and put it, set a date on it?
We could do it next month. I mean, every week.
I, I think you can have the best, you can have both worlds. You can, even if you approve this, you can have a resolution on for January that says we're going to go out and try and find another provider or bid out the provider.
And I did hear that there, Mr. Franco asked was their numbers. There may very well be numbers, but the people sitting up here on the dais, I, I haven't received any, any of the council people? No. So we haven't received them. It would be nice if we could get them since we're the ones being asked to make a decision.
Was the health department, maybe? Did they get something?
They, they provide a report each month. And we got those numbers at the pre-agenda meeting. And they did go from 600 to 700 to 900. It has increased over the past couple of months, not tremendously so. I would think that this month's going to have more. But it's not just open, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not just open to residents of the city of Bayonne.
It's not just residents of Bayonne. Anybody.
Anybody can go, just like any pharmacy, anybody can go in anywhere.
So we really, I don't think we collect that data to know whether they're residents of Bayonne. Is that what's provided?
I, I think they, they can provide a breakdown of Bayonne residents. We can ask Bespoke to provide us with that.
We do have a number hand raised. I'm going to unmute you.
Yes, based on your conversation, I agree with Councilman La Palusa that we should be going out for bids. And besides that, is anybody auditing this company to ensure that their numbers are accurate? Is anybody, you know, from the city looking to see? Because honestly, a lot of people are telling me people are just sitting around doing nothing down there most of the time. And, and again, as President Niedrowski said, small businesses, there's Stop &amp; Shop, there's O-DACOs, there's CBS, there's Rite Aid. Everybody's given vaccines. So a lot of people that I know have been going to those small businesses to, to support them. And they have more confidence in people that they know versus a company that we don't know anything about. So I agree with Councilman La Palusa in that I really think that we should go out to bid because if we're increasing it by another approximately $4 million, who's to say that they're not fudging numbers? You never know these days. It's got to be controlled not just by the company, but by an internal leadership of the city of Bayonne. That's just my feelings. Thank you.
Thank you. But I'm going to go on the record as saying I, I, I'm, I'm going to believe in the good of people and I'm going to think they're providing us with accurate numbers. But that's just me. So.
Again, Mr. Carroll moved it. Who would like to second?
Second.
So again, clarification, Jay. If I say yes to this, it doesn't mean that next month I can't say yes to go out for bid.
If you give me 45 seconds, I can do a one-line resolution.
No, we're not going to add on. We, we just complained about that, right?
Well, I mean, this is, speaks directly to it. I can just say, resolve that the purchase agent is hereby authorized to go out for bids for the provision of vaccination services.
That, that'll be fine. That'll be fine.
Okay.
Even though it's another add-on.
That's okay. Finish this.
It's prevalent to what was already in.
Okay. It's in conjunction. It's a, continue.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Addition of approval.
Mr. La Palusa?
So again, I ask you, so I can say yes to this and you're going to correct it on that?
No, I'm going to set it for separate resolution that says.
Okay. So then I'll say aye to this.
And we'll vote on that next.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Niedrowski?
Aye.
And eight is from the Honorable James M. Davis, appointing Jabril Neshwat to the Housing Authority Board to replace Gary A. Greenland for a term to expire December 31st, 2025, and a resolution confirming said appointment.
Second.
And on the resolution, resolution and appointment, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Niedrowski?
Aye. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
The add-on and.
I have a motion on.
Okay.
Well, introduce the bond ordinance. You have to at least do the submission of the supplemental debt statement.
All right, can we vote down the, my motion though? Because I made it.
Okay. 10:43. And who would like the second?
I mean, the agenda, the printed agenda is finished. Technically, meeting's finished.
And Gary has his own add-on. Gary and those add-ons.
I, I also sent an add-on, whatever. So.
The council president motion to adjourn.
It's under business. That's, it's not mine.
I know.
Okay, go ahead.
The motion is to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'm not done.
I would like to.
Nope.
Okay, if you're not going to let me speak, then, then the next.
You don't have the floor right now. You don't have the floor in the middle of the vote.
I will avail my client of all available legal remedies. I just want the council to know.
We're in the middle of a vote here.
I understand. And I'm asking you to table that because I have.
No, wait, wait, we're not, we're not in the middle of that. You.
So, okay. All right, we can go on. I'm just going to say.
The president's directed you.
I understand.
So I'm just going to say that.
That's fine.
I just believe that, you know, again, that I don't have any paperwork on anything else that's coming on. We talked 100 times today during this meeting about we don't have enough notice. We don't have any information. And then we're going to go on. We haven't noticed the public. The public was here. A number of people left. They didn't even know whether stuff was coming on. We're going to address stuff that maybe somebody wanted to speak on. Again, it's not good government. It's not effective government. And it's not transparent government. I mean, you could do what you want, but that's my opinion.
I've been complaining for years about add-ons and everybody keeps voting for them anyway. So you're either going to make one policy where you don't have any add-ons?
If there's emergency add-ons, I'm for it.
You know what? You can't pick and choose that tonight, at a certain point, you're not going to see, hear anything else. It doesn't work that way.
Okay.
So there's no second? Do I just go on? Okay. So the next add-on is from Donna M. Mauer submitting the supplemental debt statement as of December 15th.
The supplemental debt statement she's introducing.
Yeah, I'll tell you, I've never had this happen before, so.
He just moved it.
Okay. And who would like the second?
Can I, can I at least get an explanation of the supplemental debt so that the public can get an explanation?
You need to introduce the supplemental debt statement when you have a bond ordinance. They go hand in hand.
Listen, I, I understand part of this too, but I did want to hear that. But it's also good for the public to hear what this actually is, since there is no paperwork.
I have to present to the clerk prior to introduction of a bond ordinance, the supplemental debt statement, which every year I have to file an annual debt statement. And anytime we increase or decrease the debt, I have to do what's called a supplemental debt statement. I have to file it with the division the day the bond ordinance is introduced. So I did that today.
Okay.
It's always done the day the bond ordinance is introduced.
And thank you for the explanation.
I'm not even sure the council has to vote on it. It's the law reads that I have to present it to the clerk. So.
So you're saying it could have went on the consent agenda to?
With the state and file it with the clerk.
You voted on it, so.
But when I do my extracts, I have to show the vote on the supplemental debt statement.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So, so this was moved already?
By Councilman Carroll.
You need a second?
Yes, I do.
Second.
And on the supplemental debt statement, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Niedrowski?
I'm going to abstain because I believe we're in violation of the open public meeting statute.
And 10 is supporting the actions of the Town of Carney and joining in its opposition to proposed construction of a bio-waste facility at 75 Jacob, Jacobs Avenue in Carney.
What kind of facility again?
It's a bio-waste facility.
I actually did see that in print today. So I'll move that.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Niedrowski?
I'm going to abstain on the scene for the same reason.
For the record, the Open Public Meetings Act doesn't, doesn't require a agenda to be published. That's only, only in the case of special meetings. Our history has been we provide the general public with, with a.
There's no business we're discussing.
You made a public statement accusing the rest of us of doing something inappropriate. And this is the first time that you've abstained in matters such as this for that reason.
The definition when a meeting ends is when the agenda's complete.
Now, the, the council has the ability, stating fact, the council has the ability to add things on at the meetings. In fact, on resolutions, the fighting part about the Open Public Meetings Act.
The council does. The council does.
Yes.
The council.
Right.
Does any of the council have anything to add?
Well, the council, the council either says yea or nay to anything.
Jay, you're not the council.
I'm not the council.
Okay.
So if I, if I bring something up, the council can say no.
You don't get to really, as, as Gary said before, everything comes through the chair. So if you have a request, you can make it, but really the, they come from us. If they're on the agenda, they get on through us. But you can say that. I, I'm just on the record as my belief of the, but that's okay. I'm not arguing it, so you can continue. But in.
I think the difference here is that the public always has to go through the chair. That's part of Robert's rules. So when the public speaks, they don't get to go, hey, Donna, what do you think? Hey, Gary, what do you think? They have to go, can I hear this? And you could actually say no. No, we're moving on. That's it. So that's how the meeting should be run. As far as Jay, Jay is up here to give information and to give his opinion on legal matters. And so if something is said up here and he wants to interject that, that's fine. And it's true that we don't have to listen to him and we can vote however we want after he speaks.
That's the difference.
Please let him speak.
The first resolution to be, that would be proposed to be added on, I would look for a move in a second, is there exists a need for COVID-19 vaccination services. Now therefore be it resolved that the purchasing agent is hereby authorized to solicit public bids for the provision of COVID-19 vaccination services.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Niedrowski?
Abstaining.
Second resolution is a resolution that appoints Sharon Ash Niedrowski as the Class III member of the planning board for a term that expires December 31st, 2022. This is a council appointment.
Okay, Mr. Henry is online.
You going to allow him to speak?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'll then sure you, okay. I'll unmute Peter Franco.
Yeah, Peter Franco, 109 West 53rd Street. It looks like we have more add-ons. You know, council president, can you, you know, maybe ask, because my question is to the third ward councilman who thinks that like, you know, just complained about getting information last minute. Does he take a position on actually the public getting information last minute? Because I'm, you know, I kind of feel frustrated about this because not everybody in Bayonne is up right now at 10:50. I understand you guys are there and working hard and having to deal with this, but you're also paid for this. And the public, individuals, stakeholders in the city aren't paid for this. And they, again, you know, we get surprised with more add-ons courtesy of Mr. Oceanport Mayor, Jay Coffey.
Through the chair, may I respond to that?
Mr. La, the question was to Mr. La Palusa. Would you like to reply, respond?
Would you like me to answer that, council president?
That's up to you. He addressed you. If you'd like to answer, you.
Well, so the council doesn't get to hear eight add-ons that got added in today, which I had very little time to look at, the little bit of paperwork that was here, and then decide not to listen to any other ones. It's either all or nothing, which is what I said before. You don't want to listen to any more, you don't want to hear any more add-ons from this point on, like from the January meeting on. I'm all for that. From now on, let the directors and everybody else who's responsible do the work in the time before the caucus, get it on, and that's good. And if not, then it'll have to wait till the next month. Otherwise, you can't pick and choose eight things you want to listen to and eight things you don't in the same meeting.
I don't disagree with you. I didn't arbitrarily pick the eight. The eight was what was noticed to the public. That's the only reason why I.
I get it. But again, it's half. So you can't do, you can't do half.
The public didn't have any access to any of them, and neither do we. We at least read these at 10 o'clock this morning when, when they were published. I pull them from online. So I didn't, I don't want you to think it was arbitrary. I did the ones that were published, that everyone who showed up to the meeting got to look at, that everyone who went online when it was posted this morning could look at. So that's, it wasn't arbitrary where I cut it off. That's all I'm explaining to you.
Council president, can you, you know, ask the third ward councilman or, or at least explain to him? I apologize if he felt, you know, in some way that this was arbitrary or in any way. Ultimately, like you said, at 10:30 or, or 10:00 AM this morning, it was early this morning, when the agenda was finally published with seven add-ons. Now, I, I understand things have changed and certain things have to get introduced and things get missed and people make mistakes and/or things get overlooked, and that's totally fine. But to have all these additional add-ons to where the public is, is not. But to have all these additional add-ons to where the public is, is not really able to have any... Yes, they can have input, but most of these folks are already home. People that have commented early at 7:00 and 7:30 are already sleeping in their beds. It's not fair to do this, and it's not fair to ask the council representatives of this city, the legislative body, to review this stuff last minute and have to make a decision. So if you can just relate to, you know, the Third Ward Councilman, I apologize if he felt, you know, attacked in that way. But I'm looking at it from the same perspective as everybody else that read that agenda at 10:00 AM this morning. And we're not privy to all of the different things that are added on or walked on by, you know, a law director or somebody else.
I make the line in the sand right now that anything that's added on at the council meeting starting next month, I'm not voting for. And if I have to vote no, I'll vote no. But I've been after this for seven and a half years, and I'm getting a little tired of this too. So it should be on the caucus agenda or at least a day before to have some information, or I'm not voting on it.
Thank you. You know, my, my greatest appreciation is to the Third Ward Councilman. I think that's fair, and I think ultimately that should be, you know, the position of every single council person, because there's a caucus a week before where people have a chance to, you all have busy lives. You all have family members, you have people that needs, you know, be taken care of, and constituents, right? You also have jobs and other obligations. You have a week to handle the caucus agenda, right? If the items can't make the caucus agenda and stuff, at the very least, they should be put on the agenda for the public and for your own ability to research these issues. It's, it's not fair to you guys. It's not fair to us. And Gary, I thank you for that. I, you know, I'd be happy with, with that answer.
I'm out. I'll hear you in a minute.
We have another hand raised, Councilman. Do you want to use scale?
Yes, I totally agree with Councilman La Paluza. I think that's the way, that's good government, that's transparency, and that's the way it should be done going forward. It's 10:55 right now. You guys worked really hard all day and all night answering all of our questions, and I personally appreciate it. But you got to stop at one point. You can't be, oh my God, I forgot this. Oh my God, I forgot that. The directors know their jobs. They know what they need to do, and it should be put on the agenda. So Councilman La Paluza, thank you for the second time, and I totally agree that's what should be done going forward for transparency and good government. Thank you.
I would say I think we're all in agreement, but the Third Ward Councilman illustrated it perfectly. If you want to have a designated time where this is going to end, that's fine. But if you're going to get religion tonight arbitrarily, of all other nights where this has occurred, it strains credulity.
We should at least get the information at least one day before, or I'm not voting on it. That's it.
My life would be a hell of a lot easier if we didn't have add-ons. I take offense to what Mr. Franco said, Mr. Oceanport introducing these things. I produce what's asked of me. I'm not the one coming here and putting things on because the law director or the law department wants to put stuff on leak. So we're going to have a hard and fast rule, and I've been doing this 30 years. And I've seen this hard and fast rule tried to be applied in the past. And the only way this rule works is if you require, and quite frankly, you're doing the business of the city of Bayonne.
With all due respect, Jay, you're setting a rule for our council.
I'm not setting a rule. I'm telling you what the net effect, if you want to carry this rule out, if there's, and it's got to be 100%.
That's upon us, though.
It is.
Well, what's the rule that we may or may not decide to carry out?
And if you require the directors to come to the meeting and explain why they want the add-on, and I have empirical data that this works, you will see a diminution in the number of add-ons that you have. In this particular case, there are several add-ons that are here because of, we had a change in, in legal counsel. And I'm not going to use it as an excuse. I'm going to use it as an explanation, but we don't have to entertain those. But going forward, the law department's rule for how we're going to prepare documents is that if I don't have the pink sheets the Wednesday before the pre-agenda meeting, I'm not preparing a resolution. That's the law department's rule. So starting next month, directors are on notice that we have to have the pink sheets with the appropriate attachments so that we can prepare resolutions that'll be ready for the council caucus. The goal will be to have all the resolutions done for the council caucus. And then if someone wants to bring something in after that, I'd be willing to set the time aside as long as they're coming to the meeting and explaining why something has to be put on that couldn't have been put on 10 days before that.
If it's emergency.
Well, see, define emergency.
Business can't function without it. It's like...
That's, that's a slippery slope.
That's how we want to vote. Okay.
Okay, my add-on was not an emergency, but I can only speak on mine as a director of...
What add-on? Were we discussing your add-on, Tommy? Are we discussing your add-on? I, I don't know what you're...
No, we were discussing doing add-ons.
No, that's, that's okay.
All right. Because Gary wasn't sure I've given clarification. I'll talk to you after the meeting.
If we voted on it, then we don't need comment.
I'm not singling any one personnel, Tommy, either.
I know. I just, okay. I'll explain how it works.
Okay, so the item was the reappointment of Sharon A. Nadrowski as Class II member of the planning board.
Class III.
Class III.
Move.
Second.
And on the resolution for reappointment, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Abstain.
Next item is a resolution appointing Arigo De Ross Jr. as a regular member of the planning board for a term expiring December 31st, 2025.
Move it.
And on that one, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Abstain.
Next item is a resolution of the city of Bayonne designating certain properties identified as Block 465 Lot 9, 466 Lots 1, 2, 3, and 4, and Block 478 Lots 1 and 1.01 on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment pursuant to local housing redevelopment law and authorizing the planning board to prepare a redevelopment plan for Block 465, 9, 466 Lots 1, 2, 3, and 4, Block 478 Lots 1 and 1.01, and Block 506, 2.
And what is the address of this property?
This is the Exxon property, a portion of the Exxon property together with a small Conrail parcel. It's related to Duke Development. Realty.
Down by IMTT.
Hi, good evening, everyone. John Wichescala. Just, just a quick summary on it. The council actually authorized this area need of redevelopment study back in September.
Can I just let everyone know, for those who don't know, John Wichescala is the city redevelopment attorney? Because I think this might be the first time you're speaking, so I just want people to know who you are.
Council President, thank you very much. It's actually been quite a while since I've been up here, so it's a pleasure to be back this evening and joining everyone tonight. So just a quick summary again on it. This area need study was authorized by a resolution back on September 22nd. The area need study was prepared. It was actually presented to the planning board on November 9th. I believe the resolution of the planning board recommending that it be designated was adopted on December 6th. So we have the, the resolution before you for confirmation of it as being a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment, and also authorizing the preparation of a redevelopment plan. That redevelopment plan does include the one additional lot as mentioned by Mr. Coffey. It's actually an adjacent Conrail lot. It's not actually in the area in need of redevelopment, but it's adjacent. It's already designated as an area in need of rehab.
Who would like to move it?
Move.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Abstain.
Next item is a resolution of the city of Bayonne, County of Hudson, New Jersey, conditionally designating Duke Realty Bayonne Development LLC as redeVELOper of the property, which is identified as Block 465 Lot 9, Block 466 Lots 1, 2, 3, and 4, Block 478 Lots 1 and 1.01, and Block 506 Lot 2 on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne, and authorizing the preparation of a redevelopment agreement with Duke Realty Bayonne Development LLC for the redevelopment of such property. Mr. Wichescala?
Yes. So, thank you. This is obviously the property we just talked about. Duke Realty is actually the contract purchaser of the property. It's my understanding a closing on the property is somewhat imminent. They are seeking a conditional designation as the redeVELOper. What does that mean? It gives them status as a conditional redeVELOper. It does not become official until a redevelopment agreement is negotiated, which agreement actually gives the official designation. Few things that, that the board should be, or the council should be aware of. This conditional designation resolution does have a sunset provision, so if an RDA is not entered into, or for whatever other reason this terminates. It has an end date of May, and I apologize, I forget it was the 15th or the, or the 31st of May. That's within the resolution. It also requires that the redeVELOper immediately post an escrow to cover the city's costs relative to taking the time to prepare redevelopment plans and negotiate agreements and so forth. I think that is actually, you know, useful, because I certainly have seen projects where city staff and professionals have spent time, and the project didn't come to fruition, and there weren't monies there to cover those costs that were incurred. So I think those are kind of the key points on it. Again, it is only a conditional designation. It does not bind the city into anything. It is all ultimately subject to the city and the redeVELOper entering into a binding redevelopment agreement, which of course would come back before this council for formal approval.
We have a hand raised online as well.
The add-on muted.
I'm reviewing Peter Franco.
Good evening, City Council. Peter Franco, 109 West 53rd Street. Council President, can you ask the law director if this commentary earlier would also relate to the redevelopment issues regarding add-ons? I only ask this because these issues, the last two, well, this item and previous item probably could have been raised at the city council caucus, and the council members would have had more time to prepare for this.
Mike.
Point taken, Peter.
Thank you.
Is that understood?
The information was not available for this at that point.
Who would like to move it?
Move.
And a second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Abstain.
Next item is a resolution that would amend the contract for Rudeman and Roth for an additional $10,000, going from $60,000 to $70,000. Funds are available, have been certified as available at the CFO. This is in connection with the latest billing statement that put him over the, put Rudeman and Roth over the $60,000, and were changing the contract amount to $70,000 in order to pay those bills through December of 2021.
And what was the reason why they went over?
The volume of work.
Who would like to move it?
We have a hand raised again online. We've got to unuse Peter Franco again.
Good evening, City Council, once again. Peter Franco, 109 West 53rd Street. Council President, can you ask the law director if this is the outside counsel handling the non-conflict letter? Ultimately, they were waiting.
It is, and I'm receipt of that letter, and that will be dealt with internally over the next week or so.
Thank you very much.
And who would like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Abstain.
Anything else?
The next is a resolution increasing the contract for Timothy J. Moriarty as the municipal court prosecutor through the end of the year in an amount of $9,400, making the total contract amount $55,600. And this is due to the increased number of sessions that we did not count on at the beginning of the year.
Move it. Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Abstain.
Anything else?
Next item is a resolution for professional legal services, special redevelopment land use attorney as for Inglesino, Webster, Wichescala, and Taylor. Covers the period. January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022, in an amount of $150,000. This is the one in connection with various developers and redevelopers' escrow accounts.
Who would like to move it?
Move.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Abstain.
Next item is a resolution awarding a contract to CME Associates, trading as consulting municipal engineers, for professional services as the... Municipal engineer for the city of Bayonne. This is an amount of $650,000, $550,000 of which will come from developers' escrow accounts and $100,000 from various redevelopers' escrow accounts.
Who would like to move it?
So it's still $50,000 to the city?
No, it's $650,000 total, $550,000 from developers' escrow accounts, and $100,000 from various redevelopers' escrow accounts.
Okay, thank you.
Move.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Abstain.
Next one is a resolution retaining the firm of Inglesino, Webster, Wichescala, and Taylor again. This is in an amount not to exceed $150,000. This is to perform services for the city of Bayonne as our redevelopment council.
Move it. Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Abstain for the same reasons.
Last two, the last two were ordinances for introduction. First one is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, County of Hudson, New Jersey, adopting a redevelopment plan entitled Redevelopment Plan Marist for the property identified as Block 13 Lots 1.01, 16, 17, 18, and 18B01, as shown on the... 16, 17, 18, and 18B01, as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law NJSA 40A:1 et sequential.
This is obviously in Marist High School. This is a property that was designated as an area in need of redevelopment back in May. Plan was authorized for preparation. Plan was prepared that bears a date of November 24. It was presented at the planning board on December 6. There were a few minor modifications to that plan. So the plan that is appended to this ordinance for introduction will bear a revision date of December 8. And it will, just to give a summary of the proposal, that site is currently split lot zoned. It does allow for a mix of high-density, I believe, 15-story multifamily residential housing as well as commercial uses in a portion of it. The proposed redevelopment plan similarly provides for a mix of, well, it provides for both residential uses as well as commercial uses, warehousing, industrial flex, et cetera. If that property were to be developed under the redevelopment plan with multifamily, it could not be as, as a mixed-use development with warehousing or industrial use. It's only on for introduction. The plan will be available, and obviously there'd be a second reading and public hearing unseen.
Which is scheduled for January 19, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the Dorothy Harrington Council Chambers. Would like to move it?
Move.
And a second?
Second.
And on the introduction of that ordinance and its resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Upstain.
The final one is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, County of Hudson, New Jersey, adopting a redevelopment plan titled Gamal Group East Redevelopment Plan, formerly CASCAM, for the property identified as Block 361 Lot 12 and Block 362 Lot 3, as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law NJSA 48:1 et sequential.
Move it. Second. Wait, you want to explain? Go ahead.
I'm happy to give a quick explanation if anyone would like. This is CASCAM. This particular ordinance is only dealing with the east side, the two lots. So redevelopment plan has been prepared. It bears a date to December 8. It actually has two sub-districts that coincide with the two lots that are proposed. I'd say the key aspects of it. It provides also for a mix of residential as well as commercial uses, retail, et cetera. It's got a maximum height of six stories or 75 feet. That's based off of existing average, predevelopment average grade. This particular ordinance will actually be referred to the plan, I'm sorry, particular ordinance and redevelopment plan will be referred to the planning board as well for comments before it comes back to the council for second reading.
Which fixes January 19 at 7:00 PM in the Dorothy Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Can I get another look at this before it comes back to us?
Yes. So the ordinance is available. It'll be available to the public. It will also be, as I said, it'll be referred to the planning board for any, any comments and really for master plan consistency review, just like any other zoning ordinance would happen. And then it will be back to the council, and at that time, there'll be a second reading and public hearing.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Upstain.
You have nothing else, Jay?
Nothing.
With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move. Second.
And on the motion to adjourn, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.